I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Uh, we were coming out of executive session into um open session, so um our meeting um for sure has already begun. Um, so there's no need for a roll call vote um to open the public meeting, we're good there. Um, just to note, this is an open meeting, um, we do have uh Superintendent Strauss's administrative team present, uh, Mr. Strauss, Ms. Fleming, uh, Ms. Ashley Boulay, Ms. Penalt, Mr. Ward, Ms. Sullivan, Mr. Higgins, Mr. Zard, our entire phenomenal leadership team is here. At this point, um, I will ask if there's anyone else outside of Lakeham recording the meeting? Beautiful, moving right along to agenda item number three, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. There, uh, moving right along, agenda item number four, student presentations to the school committee, Ms. Lombardi, how are you?
Good, and I have a special guest with me today.
Awesome.
We were instructed to go to the podium, so we are going to stand tight.
Perfect.
Okay, so, do you want to go first?
Um, sure. So, DECA returned last Saturday, eighty-five students um attended states, um, eight students are going to nationals um in Anaheim in April.
And something that happened today was the Titan Challenge, which is a simulation where people compete acting like CEOs and ARHS actually came in first place. Also, last week was the trip to Washington DC where thirty-three students went on the trip, and we saw monuments and museums, and we went on a guided tour, and it was just a lot of fun and also very informational.
Um, music in our schools night occurred last night, um, Mr. Led- Ledwith's last year is this year, so he has been sharing announcements all month about the importance of music, and this is one of the things that they do every year. We had great performances by the concert band, jazz band, choir, and select choir. Um, we're also having a fundraiser for the class of twenty-twenty-six, and a spirit event is a volleyball tournament comprised of ten teams and open to all spectators tomorrow. This is something that we did last year for the first time, and it was a huge success, so we pulled in hundreds of dollars, and we're hoping for that next year and this year and all the years.
Later on this month, we have the event Upon a Con coming up, which is happening in the library. It's an event that's like a video game night, a game night where people come and there are tournaments that they can do, and they just compete for fun, or they can compete to win prizes, and we have food, and it's just a lot of fun.
BCC Palooza um is occurring soon, um, BCC admissions officers and financial directors annually meet with grade twelve students. This year thirty-six students are accepted on the spot and will now be making their choices for post-secondary study.
Also, on Monday, we had the Honor Bowl, which was at East Bridgewater High School, and this year, we did win last year, and this year we got second place, losing by one point.
Um, the ARHS showcase was something we did two weeks ago, and more than one hundred of our students welcomed the class of twenty-twenty-eight. Um, this is something we're trying to do to welcome more eighth graders into Upon a Con rather than vocational school, um, and we did this by presenting a lot of our clubs, sports, academics, we did an academic panel, um, we did building tours and visits to classrooms and a large athletic and clubs showcase featuring every sport and club offered. Hundreds of signups for next year's activities will give the class of twenty-twenty-eight a jumpstart into high school, and now they will choose their electives based on the student presentations.
Also, shout out shout out to the guidance department for that, they did a great job planning it, and it was very successful, like some of the students said that they are now planning on going here when they originally weren't before seeing the showcase. Also, something coming up is Steam the Street, which is a presentation that's going to outreach multimedia campaigns to help students pick future careers in the STEAM or STEM paths once they leave high school.
The last thing we have to look forward to um is Career Fair on April fifth. Professionals from many industries will present to our students on various careers that they're interested in, they took a survey um this week, and lots of parents are coming in to present what they do.
And that's all we have.
Great, thank you so much, and we ask you this, I think, after every meeting, do we have a decision for next year yet?
No, but I'm hearing from the last two this month, so one of them, one of them tomorrow, actually, but I'm kind of nervous, but it'll be okay. Thank you.
Who's your visitor?
My visitor?
Yeah.
Oh, this is Katerina.
Hi, Katerina.
Hi.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome, have a great night, thank you so much, we appreciate you. Agenda item number five, at this point, we're gonna move down to superintendent updates. Mr. Strauss.
So before I start, um, last week or last meeting that we were here, um, Lakeham was not available, um, so I was wondering, would you like me to present the early part of the budget presentation so the community can hear it during this portion, or would you prefer me to wait until after? But there are some things that need to be reviewed. That's completely up to you.
Um, I'm at the will of the committee, what do you, what do you guys think?
It's fairly brief.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that makes sense.
Okay. So let me start with um normal talking points. The AES playground equipment has arrived, it's been a long year and a half, um, almost two years, it's being installed beginning March eighteenth. Uh, the project will take approximately four weeks, which means that the AES playground will be closed to the community um through April break. Principal Penalt has um informed the community, I've informed um the community through Sunday message, Brian Day announced it at um the meeting on Monday night, uh, we will continue to um send out that message, but I want to thank Senator Rodericks for his work in appropriating a hundred thousand dollars, Nate Darling from the town for his help with our district um to make this important project come to fruition, it's, it's been a long time, I know all of you on before I was here talked about it, and so there were some work um done over the last couple of years, so this is an exciting thing for AES. Um, it's an inconvenience, but it's not seventy degrees outside right now, so this was probably a pretty good time to do it anyway. Um, in your packet is an active shooter training letter, um, the Free Town Police Department and Lakeville Police Department um have asked us once again to be able to use one of our schools to do some training, we've obviously agreed and we're excited to, to help support our, our police departments. This year it will be at FES um during April break, so there will be no students there, um, and the town will be given, and the local area will be given plenty of notice because there will be a lot of police, there will be a lot of gunfire, um, practice rounds, obviously, and so um I just want to start getting that out now, um, this is not something you need to vote on, it's something that we do regularly, but it's just more informational for you. This Saturday, uh, the eighteenth, from ten to twelve, the community is invited to uh visit the new project, there's not going to be a formal ceremony, it's really a walkthrough, so people can walk in, um, I don't know if Principal Penalt has decided, I think it's through the cafeteria, and then they will walk around and really do a loop through so that they can see all the new windows, they can see the new doors, um, uh, Principal Penalt will be there, Greg Goodwin will be there, I will be there, um, Senator Rodericks has been invited, so he's, he's trying to come, so, um, and that again was also announced by Lakeville on Monday night. As I said to all of you at our last meeting, um, we have been meeting regularly with the bus company, Ken Resendage has been great, we understand the delays, uh, we, we have fixed the delays in the morning, we now are working on the delays of getting buses to both FES and AES in the afternoon, uh, we are coming up with some solutions and, and working on a number of things, so Ken will be presenting to the school committee probably in April. Um, our equity teams continue to embrace and utilize um their voice, student voice, staff voice, um, a presentation from each school will be coming in the spring, uh, there were wonderful celebrations for Black History Month and Women's History Month, um, at, this month for, for Women's History Month, I want to commend the equity teams for the focus that they've done, um, and I did want to say, um, our PE teachers, counselors, coaches, and administrators are very aware of Ramadan right now, and um the celebrations that take place, which include fasting from sunrise to sunset, so therefore, students who, who may be fasting and not drinking, we need to keep all of that as, as part of our thought process, um, and they've shown incredible um care and concern. The principal search has been at, um, the middle school has been narrowed to two candidates, we had fifteen people on the committee, it was a committee of parents, administrators, um, staff, secretarial staff, um, and they did just an absolutely outstanding job, uh, asking some pretty specific and intense questions, they brought it down to two, those two will be meeting with central office um late next week, um, then, once we have a final candidate, that candidate will be brought here to the school committee, and at that same day, we will probably bring the candidate to the school to meet staff, and um then at some point, we will do something with parents to meet the candidates, we had an exceptional pool. Um, pre-K registration is completed and screening is tomorrow, correct, oh, Friday, excuse me. Um, that's it in terms of some talking points, any questions? No? Yes?
The eighteenth might be a good time to talk about the playground. Everybody who visits the school.
Yes, we will be saying that as they come through, we're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit about it, um, it starts, it's actually not the eighteenth, isn't Saturday the sixteenth?
Yeah, Saturday's the sixteenth.
Saturday's the sixteenth, which is when it is, so it's Saturday the sixteenth is the um walkthrough, we, uh, they start the playground installation on Monday, the eighteenth, but yes, we will be talking about it as people come through, absolutely.
Uh, Steve?
Um, going back to the um, the activity is gonna happen at Free Town Elementary School on the Monday and the Tuesday, uh, I think it's a great collaboration, it's been done over the years, uh, just because of that Free Town Elementary, can we either through the town or through the school, reach out to the Free Town Lakeville Athletic Association because it's in close proximity to Little Fenway?
Yes.
It probably just makes sense, if we're talking about gunfire and a lot of activity, just giving them a heads up, especially with the potential of students in, in that area because of baseballs.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great call out, Steve, anybody else?
Okay, I'm gonna go up and, and speak from there, Terry, you've got the presentation.
So I realize so many people in the audience and all of you, the school committee members have heard some of this, but I do think it's important for the community to hear um some of what we've talked about um in terms of where we're going with the budget. So if you can move forward, Terry? Perfect. Our mission statement hasn't changed, um, committed to providing each student with a high-quality, relevant education that promotes academic success, well-being, and responsible citizens, and I think our, our staff and our principals do, do an exceptional job with that. So the budget is a full expression of our core values and our unwavering belief in providing every student the individual educational experience that they deserve. Um, our budget request, continue moving the district forward at all levels, and anything less than that is detrimental to their futures. Obviously, our students are our number one priority, we know that we're an excellent system, we can't let that get in the way of continuing excellence. Um, I've always believed, and I will continue to say it, if we are not moving forward, we're moving backwards, status quo is not good enough for us. The budget continues to advance the educational plan, however, we are also very aware of the fin- financial and fiscal responsibilities that we have to provide an education that is affordable for everyone. So a couple of things that I think are really important for everybody to understand, Free Town Lakeville, our report card this past year for our accountability index gave us a rating of sixty in our first year together, which raises by, with rate, rates us by DSE as substantially meeting progress towards our targets. The target percentage combines data from grades three through twelve, high school completion, um, academic growth, English learner progress, advanced coursework completion, chronic absenteeism, and it gives you a number from zero to one hundred. For a group to be considered to be meeting targets, it must have a target percentage of seventy-five or higher. But I want you all to understand, obviously, we've gone through COVID, we, we know what that, and I don't believe in learning loss, I believe in learning gaps. Um, so the last time there was an accountability index was prior to COVID, and the district had an accountability index of fifty-four, we are now at sixty. What I want everybody to understand is really the bottom part, which is that the current report cards in the towns locally don't look like ours, so Dartmouth went from fifty-five is, is at fifty-five, they were at seventy, that's a significant drop. DR is at fifty-three after being at sixty-one prior to COVID. Middleborough is at thirty-three after being at fifty-six, Old Rochester is at thirty-four after being at sixty-one, Somerset is at forty-six from forty-nine, Swansea did improve, they're at fifty-two from forty-five, Westport at thirty-seven from fifty. So despite the plethora of learning gaps, over the last couple of years, we have been able to move our students, not enough, but we've been going in the right direction, and it is vital that we continue to do it, even though we are doing it with less money, and that does not mean we don't want money, what it means is that we have got, if Terry would continue, um, exceptional people. Now, I heard last year in, in our first budget together, that none of this is sustainable, we can't continue to drive this district at the financial costs that we are asking, and the districts will not be able to afford it, and my response to that is, the districts cannot afford to not fund our education. We will hurt our kids if we don't continue to do all we can to support within reason the programs that we have and that we are trying to include. We have science labs that need updating, we must provide more course offerings, we need specific special education programming, which in turn saves on out-of-district placements in some cases. Our music programs need to grow, both at the middle school and the high school, we need opportunities in primary schools for more emotional support, we saw that last year with, with grades and, and the additional adjustment council. Grants, and this is really important, we have continued to apply for multiple grants as opportunities arise from DSE and other private entities, both in special education and regular education, however, funding eligibility requirements have made it so that the last three of five that we have wanted to apply for, we don't even qualify for because of a number of criteria that has changed throughout the state. So our opportunities, and, and we can argue as to where the money's going, it is going to districts that don't look like ours, I will just leave it at that, larger-sized districts, um, there are much more opportunities for those communities, so therefore, we have to do and think smarter and create more opportunities, find more grants and continue to work on that. We understand it's a process, we understand it's, you know, um, one step at a time, it doesn't all happen, but we are focused on continuing to look at compliance, special education, ensuring that we are protecting and, and creating the best programs possible, we are now looking with an increase of our English language students to increase in, in that area, we must, and I will continue to say this, the former ESER positions, as we talked about, the former ESER positions are not going to be cut, we need them, and we have included them in our operational budget for this year, so the math specialists and all the work that, the phenomenal work that they are doing, which is one piece of why our um accountability index went up, are staying in the current budget that we have. So I'm, I'm gonna say this again, I've used this book throughout my entire career, it was presented to me years ago, Good to Great, um, accepting anything less than trying to become great makes no sense, it's a problem when we have to ask, why do we have to try to make something great, isn't success enough? We have success, there's no question, we hear about it all the time. We are doomed to fall into mediocrity if we do not look to be as great as we can be as a district. We have very good schools, but we must strive to create great schools, as our students deserve this for continued innovation. Another important thing, and I know when I first came here, one of the conversations was, we do not want to continue and compare ourselves to other districts, however, I think there's some important things that the community needs to understand. FLRSD spent fifteen thousand five hundred and seven dollars, including state aid, per pupil expenditure last year. Middleborough spent sixteen thousand six hundred and thirty-two, Somerset Berkeley eighteen thousand and sixty, Westport seventeen thousand eight hundred, Old Rochester nineteen thousand nine hundred. Now, if we continue with Dartmouth and a number of other schools, what I will continue to say is, not only are they spending more than us, but they are also in a position where some of them, if you've read the paper, are cutting teachers. We are not, I, as superintendent, do not favor us cutting teachers. Less programs, if that's what it means, but we cannot lose staff, absolutely not, i- it's vital. Um, but the number that stands out for me, and I hope for everybody, is that in the entire Commonwealth, if you don't include charter schools, Free Town Lakeville Regional School District has the ninth lowest per pupil expenditure in this Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I would not be proud of that, what I would say is, holy cow, are our people doing an awful lot with a little bit. Our teachers and our staff and building leaders, our principals and assistant principals cannot continue to do more with less, that's not sustainable, and it's not feasible to expect continued growth for our students, and it's our responsibility to pave the way for our students' future. So, why have we managed, everybody knows, from our paraprofessionals, to our principals, to our teachers, to everybody else in between, our, our um team chairs, our secretaries, our coaches, our advisors, everybody that I talk about every Sunday, they are doing remarkable work, and the foundation eventually will crumble, because if we lose people, more people will be asked to do, less people will be asked to do more work, and we can't do that, in, in any stretch of an imagination. Budget assumptions, uh, pretty straightforward, state aid, we, we are anticipating an increase of about eighty-five thousand dollars, um, school choice level funded from FY24 at three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, circuit breaker estimated to increase by about seventy-seven thousand. We must remember a couple of things, we are in negotiations with ASME, which is our custodians and maintenance group right now, um, and we have negotiations coming up for all of our teachers and paraprofessionals beginning in October, um, which we are gonna start earlier than we have started previously, so that is vitally important to keep in mind um as we look down the future, in, in terms of costs and, and all of that. Health insurance costs estimated rate increase of eight percent for FY25, we're gonna talk about that, it is less, um, utility costs, as everybody who lives in a house, um, are continuing to go upwards, so nothing is getting cheaper, we certainly know that. So our recommended budget is forty-four million nine hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, last year's budget forty-three million three hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-one, for a dollar increase of one million six hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and forty-seven, with an increase, overall increase of three point seven nine percent. Now, I will say that we had a wonderful meeting with Deb Hattie and Bob Nunes, Deirdre, myself, Terry, Bob, and Deb, it, it was an open collegial, positive meeting that was very collaborative, we talked about the towns, we talked about where the towns are, um, and I think we're moving in a good place, um, so I just want to leave it for that, I think it's important before other questions come up, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, great. So does that wrap up your?
Yes. Yep.
Your updates, great, perfect, um, so, and obviously, we're gonna be revisiting the budget here very shortly, uh, but first, moving down to agenda item number six, is the, oop, Steve, sorry, quick question.
Uh, where are we with, with uh, pre-K registration?
So, pre-K registration is closed, screening is Friday.
So how many registrations did you have?
Uh, I believe we had nineteen, so with nineteen families coming in on Friday, and of that fourteen will be accepted.
Okay.
Okay.
And those are just our role model students, so that's not including specialized members.
Thank you.
So it was rude of me to jump ahead, any other questions?
Thank you.
Perfect. Um, agenda item number six, acceptance of minutes, at this point, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of February fourteenth, um, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion from Ms. Fox, so I have a second.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Sylvia, um, any further discussion pertaining to the minutes of two fourteen twenty-four? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Abstaining.
Two abstentions, uh, Ms. Fleming and Ms. DeBark, great. Uh, moving along, uh, the executive session minutes from the same date, two fourteen twenty-four, I have a motion to approve by Ms. Fox, so I have a second.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Sylvia, great, um, any further discussion pertaining to the motion on the table? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Aye.
Fleming and Ms. DeBark, perfect. Um, moving right along here, down to agenda item number seven, public participation, as always, it's going to be in accordance with our district policy regarding uh public participation, each speaker is gonna be permitted a maximum of three minutes, during which time they can speak about topics within the scope and the responsibility of the school committee.
Hi, Crystal Ng, Lakeville, um, I have some questions about the budget. Um, I was at the town meeting in Lakeville on Thursday, and we were told that the budget needed to be cut, so where does that leave us? Is the budget actually being cut, or are we looking for a override?
So yeah, great, so great question, I will tell you that we are not looking for an override, and shame on us, I guess we did a pretty poor job of planning this meeting, we probably should put public participation after our FY25 budget discussion, um, so what I'll tell you is those questions are gonna be answered here tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That was easy, thank you, Crystal. Anyone else? All right, uh, moving right along, old business, FY24 budget update.
I've got two things for you this evening, outside of the
I've got two things for you this evening outside of the FY25 component of my report to you. First of all, as you know, E&amp;D came certified at $1.785 million. It's less than what we submitted at $1.917 million. The reductions seem to be teacher summer payrolls for grant funds as of June 30th carryovers. And we're working with Grady O'Connor in regards to that certification in excess and deficiency. Thank you also for all the struggles we had with signatures because of sign-offs and passwords and things like that. So the segregated signatures that change over really held me up. So thank you very much for all of that.
It was the one in the password.
It was the one in the password, yes. I thought I was being helpful there. With respect to forecasting FY24, we're in the third quarter of the fiscal year right now and we're developing the FY25 budget. So staff and I have started the forecasting work that you would need to do, particularly around, for example, health insurance. And so all of those areas are being forecasted for June 30th as well as making sure we're incorporating them in our FY25 budget and budget discussions. Specifically, health insurance is a key area and we're working with our benefits administration and with Jack. Jack is going through his part of his practicum. Here's how you forecast June 30th in your current year, Jack, and here's how you budget for FY25 and here's what you need to take into consideration, particularly because you're a regional school district, as you know, and you carry your retirees in your budget. Also, your retiree rates changed July 1st and not, I'm sorry, January 1st, not July 1st. So Jack has been enthralled in his practicum with respect to this kind of work as well. Additionally, regarding forecasting where we are June 30th and the FY25 budget discussions, as you know, we have a meeting with Train tomorrow. And Train is coming in along with Jack, Deirdre, Greg, the Train representatives. And what we really want to do is, there's one page in particular that I'm very interested. It's page 56 out of 122, which is establishing this savings kilowatt at that point and as your baseline. And that if you don't have any new air conditioners, if you don't have any new programming, if you don't change the temperature, then your savings are going to be this. But once you add certain things, your savings become, well, if you didn't, you would have saved. However, you also have that lease payment that I'm concerned about, that I have spoken to yourselves, yourselves, I'm sorry, the committee about. It's a payment lease as opposed to a debt schedule and that lease is back-ended at the 20th year. And what I mean by that, your principal payment this year is $177,000. Your principal payment in 2038 is $521,000. So it escalates instead of de-escalates. So I've contacted your bank and a few other folks that, is there anything that we can do to refinance that debt to at least make it like this for the remaining period of the debt, which is 16 years? So if there's anything that we can do for you there, we're also trying to do that. But that's a great meeting with Train. It's, Jack will be involved and will get that operations component assigned to Jack as far as that's concerned as well. So.
If I can just add one piece. Jack is Jack Higgins. He will be the new finance director, just for the community.
Oh, sorry.
Just in case they're asking. No, it's okay. Just in case they're asking who Jack is.
Yep.
He's the one holding his head in his hands.
Yes. He's at, he's at his son's communion tonight, so.
Oh, great.
Dumb it down for me on the E&amp;D piece. So we're certified at 1.7? Okay. Call it 1.8 for Common Core map.
Okay.
Anything that we need to do different to reconcile what we submitted versus, versus what, what we submitted versus what has actually been certified on?
I sent this immediately to Grady. And Grady says teacher summer payroll is Title I. I reviewed it with Teri and a few other folks. That seems to be what it is.
Okay.
And it's a matter of running your trial balances at the right time and that everything is booked appropriately. So clearly, I have misbooked something in a grant's end of the year. And it looks like, if I look at it, for example, I have Horace Mann, Delta Dental. These are payroll withholdings.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not even general fund money. It seems to be payroll withholding. So clearly, I have misbooked something. Grady has it so that we can make the adjusting journal entries appropriately, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the FY24 budget? Okay. Moving right along, new business, agenda item number nine, Student Opportunity Act. There is a vote requested here. It'll be, the following, be two weeks. Yep. Got it.
Today's first week.
Yeah.
Got a little nervous.
And you can vote if you want to. Katie, I am Teri Summing. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Assessment for our family members. Tonight, I'm presenting on the Student Opportunity Act for our next three-year cycle. And, yep, defined you, Ashley. Thanks. This is a timeline for the Student Opportunity Act with a state. We have to have an approved plan for April 1st upload. From April to June of 2024, the state reviews the plans and they provide feedback. We publicly have our plans posted. In fact, you can go to the DESI site now and see our old plan, which focused on our English language learners. And then we have a three-year annual progress monitoring reporting process that we go through. What this provides for is for us to focus in on a smaller student group. The first time, that first 20, the first 20 to 24 cycle actually was the first time the state required it of the districts. And I think they found some corrections that they needed to do for how people identified their focus groups. So this time, they have put a little more constraints on how we align and what our data shows or where our data is stemming from. So our Student Opportunity Act has to be aligned to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, educational vision and strategic objectives. So in the electronic version of the presentation, they are linked on a couple of the slides you'll see. And then we have to have improvement targets for all of our districts focused on the lowest performing student groups. What that does is it takes it just from the one, you'll see later on, we're focusing on one area. It takes it and spreads it out and says, yeah, you can, you're going to focus on one area, but you're also going to include all lowest performing student groups, which affects our entire district grades three through 12. And then they provided a new student outcomes comparison tool just to keep it simple for us. Hey, look at these bright red and you're going to see the, you're going to see the screenshots of them. Look at the bright red here and that's where you're drawing from your focus, your focus groups. So there's, on that slide, there's an educational vision document linked there. It is about a 57-page document. I bullet pointed it for you nicely into four areas. The state's goal is that as a result of public education, students will attain academic knowledge and skills. They'll understand and value themselves. They'll understand and value each other. And they'll engage with the world. So that they can be curious and creative, shape their path and feel connected and be empowered. That is just a summary of the bullet points, but the document as a whole is linked there. And I'm happy to send it to any of the community that would like to put themselves to sleep with it. The districts, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. The state's strategic objectives fall into a summary of these five areas. Of course, strategies. And that's the visual that they provide. Thought it nicely aligned with what they were doing to strengthen. Curriculum and instruction to promote educator development, to support social, emotional learning, health and safety, and to turn around the lowest performing districts and schools. That piece right there kind of links to what Mr. Strauss was talking about with the limitations on the grant funding and the focus on the grant funding. And then to enhance resource allocation and data use across the state. And again, that document is linked a little shorter. I think that was about 27-page document. But that's also linked there for you. So here is a comparison tool. It's called a heat map. And I know it's a little small on that screen, but you do have the copies in front of you for those in the audience and listening and watching. The dark red is really the areas that we had to choose from for our Student Opportunity Act plan this time around. And the columns are the years and the categories. And then the, the lines are our subgroups and our student subgroups. And so if you look there, you can quickly draw your eyes down to several areas of dark red where performance is low or we are being identified as needing improvement. And chronic absenteeism in our percent of out-of-school suspensions, in our percent of ninth graders passing, and in our dropout rate, and then our percent graduation. Now, we know that as a district that we have, that these are represented, some of these columns are representing really small numbers. The goal of the Student Opportunity Act is to really focus on small groups, which is why our English language learner group was the focus last time. This time, when we looked at this and looked at other information, we felt like our most immediate needs and an area that we could really make an effect on overall would be our percentage of ninth graders passing because we can tie the middle school into that, to that growth into ninth grade as well as working with our ninth grade class. Right now, that number represents 20 students, Kalen, as of quarter two. Is that, that's what I noted? 20, no, the whole column. The whole column represents 20 students. But we chose that area because we can actually help the blue and the light pink, all, that whole column can be helped by focusing on the, on the percent ninth graders passing. So our, our request is to focus on that column for the Student Opportunity Act. And the next slide, the state said, yes, we want you to focus, but we also are going to require that you improve your academic performance. And that is not just in our ninth graders passing, but in either ELA or math achievement on MCAS. When you look at this page, the top shows our, the bright red is our students with disabilities and the light pink is low income in ELA and math. And then at the bottom is really, I went ahead and focused our attention down at the bottom because it talked about grade levels and grade spans versus student subgroups. And you can notice right away that it's our math scores that are, that are lower than our ELA scores overall for, for all students. And so I am requesting that we focus on our math scores for this Student Opportunity Act plan. Go ahead, Ashley. Thanks. The plan itself is broken up into several sections. The first section is an analysis of data and selected student groups for focus support. So as I just showed on the heat map, our goal is to focus on our ninth graders, percent of ninth graders passing courses. We're going to do this by focusing on positive school environments. Student voice, high-quality secondary programs, extended access to pre-K. I know that seems a little odd that that has an effect on the ninth grade passing rate, but it does. And inclusivity, inclusive school communities. Section two, I'm sorry, just, yep. Section two is that improvement, the data, the academic improvement. And the state is requiring that we either set our own targets or we use the state's targets for lowest performing student groups, requiring 4.6 to 5.1% increases annually on math MCAS or ELA, MCAS scores over the 2024, 2027 timeframe. So with our math, we'd be looking at some increases that make it so that we are reaching the state's goals. Ours will not be quite that high because we are closer to the state's goals or have exceeded the state's goals in some grade levels already. So that is just the, the, the typical growth that's required for this in math. And so they set the targets and I am very confident that we will be able to meet those. Section three has to do with engaging families and our stakeholders. Many people participated, including our staff, on a Safe and Supportive Schools Grant that we were awarded. And part of that was providing information around sixth levers. From that, we have found that these areas will help us build relationships with our students and our families and our educators and the community. And some of that work has already been happening in the district, including our diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging community meetings once a month, led by Mr. Ward. Our school committee meetings where we have public comment, building parent/teacher organizations, our PTOs. And then principal advisory councils, student councils, equity teams, roundtables. And then we have started to branch out more to work with our community to find relationships. So for example, we are meeting with the Lakeville Arts Council to create opportunities for our students and to build projects within the community. And, and we want to do that with the mindset of creating that career options. So reaching out to the community and having some career opportunities balance some of their academic, educational experiences. So we've started to work on that as well. Section four is the evidence, right? How we have to prove ourselves. So the state said, here's three objectives. Just like any rubric under the three objectives, there is many elements that we could choose from. So whole student, deeper learning, diverse and effective workforces are the three strategic objectives of the state. And then the next screen are the elements that we determined that we could focus on and the evidence that would be provided to meet those. So under positive school environments, with integrated services and aligning initiatives that promote student behavior, mental health and wellness, we believe that the evidence will be shown in decreased chronic absenteeism rates. For us, we have some chronic absenteeism and some of our buildings are quite low already. So just absenteeism as a whole, not even if we put the word chronic in front of it. We want to get kids in the building. We can't, we can't teach them if we don't have them in front of us. And then for the second element, high-quality secondary programs, we've already started to talk about how we can increase our students' access to career, career choices, not a career pathway, innovative pathways. And that involves working with the community on some of the components of building career-connected activities for them. The evidence there is enrollment in those courses as they are built and an increase in completion of advanced coursework rates. So for our students that are heading to colleges, they may be working harder and more in the AP classes. And then for our students that are going to a career pathway, we will see enrollment increases in those new opportunities that we're working on. Extended access to pre-K falls into line with a lot of the work and the evidence of having that early literacy screening that we're doing now in both buildings, as well as just getting kids engaged and enthusiastic and successful. That starts at pre-K. So that's why it's one of our elements. It has already been one of our focus points in conversation. So now it's just being played out in our three-year plan. And then the last one about stakeholders has to do with inclusive school communities. We want to create those conditions to sustain and retain equitable culturally and linguistically inclusive environments, to foster a sense of belonging for students. Mr. Strauss has started this work from day one, or day negative 30, hey, yeah, in the district. And that will continue as we look to increase staff professional development and decrease the educators that are inexperienced or are teaching outside of their field of certification, as was seen on our accountability report this year. That is a plan in a four-part nutshell. Any questions?
I have a quick question for Steve. One of the things I've seen over many, many years is we go in cycles sometimes. So I'm really pleased about the focus on math. Clearly, the data show that we need to do that, but I don't want to lose sight of ELA because like seven years ago, that's where we fell short badly.
I totally agree, Gene. Thanks for bringing that up. And we have done such a phenomenal job in our buildings of embedding writing across the content this year. That is not going to fall off. So as our strategic plan, our school improvement plans play out, you're going to see those threads continue. I am not, I, I think in 360 degrees or at least 359 degrees. So we will continue to focus on literacy. Our prepaid three buildings, their priority is to get our kids reading because that pays off in all of our content areas.
Yes.
Number fluency, right? Building that confidence in learning, building inquisitive minds, like just going off of their normal curacities as, as five-through-eight-year-olds. And then as we transition to the intermediate school, you know, building that into more- And then as we transition to the intermediate school, you know, building that into more substantial academic learning. The, the model that is set up at the intermediate school allows for teachers that strengthen their own instruction, because they focus on math and science, or they focus on ELA and history. So that piece will naturally transition into the intermediate school, which allows for the kids to hopefully build confidence in switching classes, and it's a nice transition. And then as they go to the middle school, we continue to provide opportunities. That's where the career pathway unfolds, right? Like our, our STEM program, we need to build so that at the high school, our computer sciences are being, were built up and increased in, in enrollment. But that doesn't mean, we have wonderful electives and opportunities in our humanities programs at the high school. We want to expose our kids to what interests them, because every student has the ability to learn and be interested in learning based on their own passions, and we want to continue like all of that. We're not going to force a STEM thought, but we want to expose kids to STEM. We want to expose kids to literature and writing, because we never know what they're going to become.
No, thank you.
It's important for everybody to understand, and as always, great job, Terry. Chronic absenteeism for all parents is considered to be 10% of the school year, which is 18 absences. It does not matter, although it matters to us, it does not matter to DESI, the reason why someone is out. So if someone is hospitalized for three months, they are considered, and, and there is a note, and it is serious, it is still considered chronically absent. We can argue all we want why, that's the DESI rubric, and I think it's important for people to understand it. I'll also say, I want to give kudos to our principals. When we first came in, that was one of the first things that we noticed, and we had conversations with the principals, and their numbers dramatically changed. I can think of one school that was at 28% chronically absent, which is hot, very high, and is now at about 15%. Now, 15% is still high, but we are getting there. So even before the Student Opportunity Act, it, it was a focus of ours. And kids who are not in school cannot be successful in school. And, and part of the digging is why are they not coming to school? Not the student who is, who is sick and ill, but what is it from preventing them from wanting to be in school? Which ties in the belonging piece, which ties in the comfort and, and the connection with adults. So there are multiple layers to this, and, and I think it'll be some really good work for all of our students. We're really interested, I know Ashley is really interested in looking at, you know, our special education students, and where are we going? And, and why are some of them not coming? We need to start asking those questions.
Thank you for clarifying the chronic absenteeism, there's obviously 18 there. That number included the days of being COVID positive, am I correct?
Yes, it didn't make any difference why.
So, based on numbers, you're capturing either five or 10 days just on a positive. So I, I'm hoping with the new guidelines that that is, will be a positive impact to our numbers.
Correct, but, but in doing our research prior to COVID, our numbers were still in the twenties.
We were dinging on that.
Right, and, and so numbers were at 23, numbers were at 24. It obviously changed during COVID, although they didn't, they, during, during COVID, there was no accountability index. They were not dinging us for, any district in, in the state, for kids being absent. So these numbers are prior, these numbers are since.
But we also have last year, where we still had the...
Correct.
You still had to stay home?
Right, right, different, the number of kids. So, um, help me understand overall why? Notwithstanding, I, I get it, we're focusing on a group, we want to help improve these, but what do we get from the state?
Now you're asking some psychology questions.
Well, I think the other thing that's too important is not, what are we getting from the state? It's what will we not get from the state? Because we haven't provided a Student Opportunity Act. And they have been very clear, and I don't know what the new commissioner is going to do, but Steve, you can probably, you know, tell it from...
That's what I kind of understand, right?
They have the ability to say, if you don't provide a Student Opportunity Act, you will lose state funding.
Here's the first paragraph on my page. "The Student Opportunity Act was enacted in 2019, injecting significant new funding into the Commonwealth's educational system, with a focus on providing funding to districts serving students with the greatest needs. The law also included a critical provision that requires every district to set clear targets for improving disparities in achievement among student groups, and develop a three-year plan to implement evidence-based strategies to meet their targets." So I, you know, it's the states, it's one of the ways the state is saying, you know, we are seeing whatever trends in MCAS, because that's been like the, the piece, right? That's been the data point. And now they want to make sure that people are looking at their plans and their, and their growth from a different angle. The accountability index, the, the report cards, that gives us a lot of information, but I feel like this might be the way that the state feels like they're holding us accountable for actually doing something with the data.
So if, if we meet this 5.1%, right? Or higher, does that mean...
Do we get more funding?
No.
That's what I'm, my point is, the answer is, I get the answer is no here. So I, I do want to make sure we're putting the effort to these, these at-risk groups. I totally support that, but what are we getting from the state anyways?
Which is why we chose...
Steve, I will say, in, in my opinion, I do believe that this is not wasted work. I believe it is work that we need to do anyway. It's quantifying it now, whether or not we support, we have to do it, or they're going to keep, that's a separate. But there's nothing on here, as Terry and Ashley and I sat down, there's nothing on here that is not work that we would already be doing and, and looking in data. So if the end result is we don't get any extra money, I'm okay with that because of the advantage, but it's not worth it to me to lose money.
And I agree with that mindset, right? I just, I look at this, and I want to make sure we're in a focused area, right? Not saying these groups aren't going to be focused here, but we all know that if you're looking at ninth grade, next year, you're going to have a different look and feel of what ninth grade looks like. You're going to have a different look and feel of how each grade progresses along in this district.
So if you look at the categories, Steve, that we could choose from, that ninth grade pass rate actually gave us the broadest scope for a target group, because we will be looking at our seventh, our rising seventh and eighth graders. We will be using that data as a progression from our eighth grade, so that we can have predictions as to how the students are going to do in ninth grade. And it will allow that transition plan from the middle school to the high school to be more inclusive. The eighth grade showcase is a perfect example of what we do to get the kids into the building and should, and try to engage them in a, in the emotional and social portion of being a high school student here, right? But this just feeds us the opportunity to expand that even more and focus on that even more. So if you look at the heat map and you find another area that you would rather, you know, by all means analyze away and let, and, but I did feel like we, we thought that the ninth grade, and because it's not eliminating the academic focus of all low performing students, and that's where it doesn't read well in here, but all low performing students, that data table for us was third grade through 12th grade students.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it as just another thing that we have to do to prove...
It's hoop jumping.
It is, but I think it's also consistent with the work that the, the sites and the principals have done with school improvement plans and district... So there is consistent language there, and you're right, it is a state mandate. You don't want to lose funding. We will probably get nothing, but at least we're speaking a common language.
And you didn't see, you didn't hear anything that you probably haven't heard us already talk about in our plans. It's not, none of it was a surprise. When I, when we were looking over it together, I, I don't believe that any of us were surprised at, at what we were working on, because we've already started the work.
Right, so this was in effect another school improvement update, so we can push that out and save them another day.
And again, we also, so keep in mind, we didn't, and Steve, getting to your point, we didn't just look at data points from 2023, although that's what they had us look at. We went back, and consistently, our, our ninth graders have struggled, a small percentage of them. So therefore, we then look at the, the trends as to what is happening prior to ninth grade, where students are, are falling behind, or not, don't come in with the habits of mind that we might want for our students. So it's just another checks and balance, in my opinion.
One quick question, then we just got to move forward. Terry, what does the progress monitoring look like on, on behalf of the state?
I can only speak to the last one for the last cycle, which was supplying data points. So for our EL students, I provided access scores and report cards, and, report card information. And, and then our iReady benchmarking information. So it was providing data points and a summary. It was, this time, it is all being done on their new system gems, so I don't have that familiarity yet to know what they're looking for on, but ask me next, um, July.
Absolutely, will do. Thank you. Thank you, Terry, for that. That was great. I think we'll be ready to certainly vote to sit your next, at our next school committee meeting. I know you have a deadline to be able to get this uploaded to the state, so we'll make sure that we get that voted in two weeks, but thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, in new business, we have a 2024, 2025 district calendar. This is the first reading, so I'll open it up to the committee for any questions. I do recommend getting this into the town's hands, because our town clerks always provide us with a little bit of insight that, that we might not see from, from their lens. So if we could do that, that would be great, just for feedback, but probably already been done.
First Tuesday, obviously, would be Election Day, so that's a PD day.
Yep, just want to make sure we keep them...
And then if snow happens, we still have to take Juneteenth off.
Correct, I mean, I, I will say, and I say this with not an opinion, I want you to hear this, that there are multiple districts, and you're going to start hearing it, who are starting to talk about teachers coming back prior to Labor Day.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, you know, I, I'm not proposing that, certainly not for this year, but I think it's a conversation as, as we get longer. We've been lucky, the last two years, we've had one day each for snow. If we had four or five, we're talking about June 30th. That makes it for a very difficult summer for families, it makes it, you know, ESY kids, it makes it difficult just for staff. So it's something to think about, and Steve, you're looking at it.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, well, let me just first say, I, I appreciate moving some of these in-service days before the weekend. It's, it's a benefit to the primary grades level, because they can plan schedules. Having a half-day in the middle of the week is always challenging. I, I think a couple of years ago, we had the before long weekends to help with family planning and all that, but the fact that we're abutting them in the beginning or the end of the week, I think helps in that. And again, it's more about when, when parents need to be home, when the kids get off the bus, Steve, great. As far as starting before, we've always been 50/50, right? In this communities here. And I think that where we need to settle on is if Labor Day is scheduled to be later than the 5th of the month, we start earlier, right? Because the, you're going to get a lot of feedback from the community, and a lot of it is around family time, that it's...
Sure.
Water is still warm Labor Day weekend, or before Labor Day weekend versus the end of June. So I, I think that instead of just a car lunch, I think you need to look at...
Sure.
You know, hey, that, whatever that is, and we've been lucky, because we're in this, this, this cycle here, but in the next couple of years, when, you know, Labor Day is, is further into the calendar, when September 1 is the, the Tuesday, right? I, I think that's where we have a, a better option of, of working within the community.
Sure.
Yep.
If I can add something, I think that seeing models of what it looks like, so most districts that start before, like it's a, it's a, a learning tool, right? Like most districts that start before Labor Day, they have a long weekend still. They take the Friday off.
Yep.
It's a gradual work in between three days, four days, five days.
And there's a lot of PD, too. They do a lot of the PD upfront.
And families have, you know, you know, they're looking at daycare, and, you know, there's a lot of reasons, there's so many factors, but I think that seeing models would help people as well.
The other piece to think, I'm sorry, something?
No, I, I, seeing models would help, but I think, and I, I guess I'm not asking for a survey, but I sort of am. It would be nice to hear from families what they thought about, because that is a big jump, that's a big difference.
We've had this discussion over the years a few times, and we had that one snowmageddon year where we were up almost against the Fourth of July.
Right.
And that's really tough for families, too.
And that impacted...
And the kids are not engaged, so, you know, you have to look at that as well. They're much more engaged going into school than they are at the other end of it. They're all planning their summer breaks, and the weather's getting warm, and it's difficult to keep their attention span. But I like your idea, Steve, is pick a date, and, and if, if it's a, it's an early date, that's one scenario. If it's a later date for Labor Day, that's another one. And I think that that would make it easier for people to, to, it's a calendar thing. And June 19th does throw us for a loop, because you get those snow days, and June 19th is a day off, and where that lands could be very inconvenient for people.
The other thing that I want us to just think about as we go into multiple readings here is December break.
Yeah.
Wednesday, the first, and we're coming back for two days. And so the question becomes, what is the cost? Is it worth it for opening a building for, for two days versus two full weeks for families? Traditionally, you know, and again, we, we have to look at numbers, but traditionally, you're going to have, with only two days, you're going to have more families who will continue to travel and not come back until the weekend.
Which will impact our chronically absent.
And I do know schools are doing that.
There are multiple schools.
They're bumping them out, so they get the two weeks.
So, so I'd like us to think about that. I certainly don't think I need to survey the staff as to what the answers are going to be. But, you know, again, when you give, there's something that's got to come back on the other end. But I, I think there's something to be said about two full weeks. And I'm not looking to make life, we always talk about life harmony, this is an opportunity to be able to say to families, you have full time during vacation. I would like to hear from Greg, and Greg, maybe we can sit down and talk about cost, about opening up, what are there savings, are there not? What's the purpose of running for two days? I, I don't know the answers to that, but I think it's something for us to think about.
But I, if you look at this year's calendar, I think that's a, a, a great option to, even if it is a trial period, to say, hey, listen, we're going to go this year, but the benefit is you're going to get two full weeks, right?
Right.
Around the December break.
Correct.
Right? So I, I think that's an avenue that you can take a look at. The only other piece that I would ask is, I know a lot of parents can, um, plan around graduation, especially with out-of-state presence, if there's a way that, that could be determined earlier and, and put on this calendar, so that way...
So you can't determine graduation until you determine the number of snow days. So we now, listen, I'm smart enough to know that there's potential for snow in April, but we have to be able to, I believe, Kalen, you might remember, is it March 30th? There's a day that DESI says you cannot determine graduation until, I think it's March 30th, it may be a little bit later, but we have to make sure that we're not going to, so if we have snow days, we could have a problem.
We can determine graduation, but we have to like wait to determine the last day of school for seniors, so it's not too far from now.
So we're close, I should, we should be able by the next, if not the next meeting, by April 3rd, be able to determine graduation.
So could I, without any objection for the, the chair and anything, I'd be interested to see what the calendar looks like with that potentially starting before Labor Day, but with two weeks off in December. And I know Renee loves this. It doesn't have to be color coding in this fashion, but if, if we look at that, you know, I just...
Thanks, Renee.
Before we move off, could I...
These are all in a very nice shade of gray, so I appreciate that, so.
So since we're talking calendars, one of the things that we have to do in the Business and Finance Office, and I see Cara, are 27 pays. We did 26 pays last year, instead of evoking the 27 pays. And so now we're going to have to calendarize next year's payrolls. And 12-month pay, payroll folks are going to skip a pay because of the way the calendar comes up. Every seven years, every eight years, it adds that extra day. So we, as a community, need to publish our payroll calendar for FY '25, and there's going to be a gap for 12-month employees. So the sooner that we work on that together, the benefit that's going to be... And there's gonna be a gap for 12-month employees. So the sooner that we work on that together, um, the benefit that's gonna be.
Great. Any other questions? Great. Perfect. Uh, moving on to, I think, the meat of our discussion tonight will be the FY '25 budget review. Um, so our plan, our game plan tonight is to review the five schools in special education. Uh, at the following meeting, it will be the facilities or operations pieces of of the budget. Um, so I'll kick it to Superintendent Strauss to kind of start things off, and then we can we can dive in. I think Steve will probably have a few questions.
Deirdre, you ready to?
Sure, yes.
We're gonna just bring it right to Deirdre and then have you.
Can you? Yes, absolutely. Going into this, um, Superintendent, can you just highlight the meeting? Because you did speak about it in your intro. Could you just highlight the meeting between both towns, which is kind of gonna set the stage for the conversations that we're having tonight?
Sure, which is part of Crystal's question. I know Deb, feel free to interject anything. So Bob, Deb, myself, Terry, and Deirdre met. As I said, it was collaborative. Um, I I deeply appreciated um the transparency. The last thing any of us want is an override. The last thing any of us want is a fight. And and so Bob came in and and was pretty straightforward about where um Lakeville was and the amounts after he had seen our original assessment. What he felt, because he could not speak for his board, Chris, you're here, so you could speak as well, would be a fair number that was workable, that was not an override conversation. And from there, Deb felt comfortable, and I don't want to speak for you, Deb, but that if we were able to get the exact number where Lakeville was, that Free Town would be comfortable in 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 the same area. And it was, Deirdre, 300 and how much was it? 387?
Uh, to to Lakeville?
To Lakeville.
Well, 703.
703.
So that was the number that Mr. Nunes had emailed Alan and I.
Which was a reduction of about 380,000.
Approximately, yes.
Correct. And so we got there, um, and I I wanna say thank you, Deb. Bob's not here, but it it. There were obviously questions. Where are um the prior ESER positions going? You know, all of those questions. And um, Deb, I'll let you speak, but for me, it was extremely positive. We knew exactly where we needed to be. There would be no um bickering back and forth. It was it was wonderful.
Very professional. We we came together. We are, you know, were very blunt, to the point. This is where we need to go. Is there any way to get us there? And I think people, Deirdre and and Superintendent Strauss said, I think we can get there. I think we can. And and we started working a little bit, and then we left, and and that's that was how it went. Yeah, I agree with you. It was productive. Um, I'm hopeful that, like you said, we got there. We've kind of got preliminary numbers, but we're waiting to see tonight what that looks like for the budget.
Sure.
Great. Thank you. All right. So thank you. Thank you for that little prelude.
And and for your question, Crystal, uh, which I haven't forgotten, we will get there, but that's the preliminary that no, there's not gonna be an override. That that's not our intention. Um, that's not fair to this community. It just divides. That that's not good. I appreciated the fact that Deb and Bob didn't come in with, we need to go level funded. That helps us not at all because it starts cutting people. And the sources is a conversation for school committee that that they will have. But we have we have explained to the school committee where we think it can come from without hurting the operational budget. So we're in a pretty good place with that. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. All right, um, diving right into it, I believe we're gonna start, are we gonna start with Central Office or are we gonna start with Asal Wanza?
Let's start with Central Office.
Got you.
We were supposed to do the sites and.
I thought we would. That's what I thought.
So I thought so.
I can do anything you want.
Oh, oh, no. How about this?
Okay.
We can dive into Asal Wanza. I have a few questions that I'm hopeful that you will say, yep, I can get that answer for you related to Central Office.
Okay, great.
Okay?
I'm okay with that.
First and foremost, uh, can we get in summary view, I apologize.
No, it's okay. No, it's all good.
So I will limit it to 26 questions in under different parts.
Exactly.
Um, can I get, or can we get, uh, with this budget, um, how many net new positions are included in this budget? Break out the ESER positions that we now moved into the operating budget, and how many retirees are are in the budget assumption?
Yes, that's pretty much what was sent out to the FinComs with respect to net new or the multiple fiscal years that was asked for.
Yep.
But what it, and.
Go ahead. I'm looking at this budget here.
Yes. So you're looking at that budget there.
Yeah.
And that budget consists of, on my four-pager, I have 15 bullet points as to what it consists of.
Right, so we're gonna get to that. Is that what you're saying?
Not in the central, we we certainly can get to that.
I'm talking district-wide. I'm not talking just Central Office. I'm talking district-wide.
So are you speaking specifically of the 3.0 ESER math positions? They are within each site.
Okay.
So if we can go to the sites, you'll see that every site has retirements reflected. Retirement personnel and salaries are out, and replacement salaries are in as an M3.
Okay.
So the salary projections that are in the budget as a whole include moving our current staff, steps in lanes, including the 3.0 math specialists that were previously funded from ESER in the sites where they belong, so that each principal can speak to the site-based budget where the ESER position is. Any retirement, resignation, personnel action, non-renewal is not in the budget. The replacement salary is for the M3. Because you're moving out a a senior salary at $80,000.
Yeah.
We're gonna hire someone at an M3 for 53. That delta is out.
Yep. Okay, so I'm, what I'm looking for is a summary of how many teachers are retired.
Send it to you tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you. So we can move into.
So can I mention, so if you want them, so so there are four teachers retired in this budget reflective of the salaries as well as the health insurance, right?
Yep, okay, great.
So we have the health insurance plans, too. The additional piece to that is contractually, teachers have until April 1st to tell the district whether they're retiring or not. So the retirees that are reflected in the budget are the retirees that we know of at this point in time.
Got it. So if if I'm doing this correctly, and I'm seeing three ESER-funded position plus a FTE secretary position in this budget.
Correct.
Okay, and those posi, the the four retirees won't be backfilled because they're being backfilled by the three ESER positions.
No.
So where are we offsetting the ESER positions in the operating budget?
When we added up everything, I'm not sure how to answer that question. So we did a staffing projection based on the current staff that we currently have in the district.
Yep.
And we moved it forward and calculated the salaries. We subtracted those retirees and reduced the salary, but we knew we were gonna hire a replacement for an M3, so we added M3s.
Yep. So that's typically what we do, right?
So the ESER positions were in the role, so they're currently in the budget. You'll see the offset on the site. You'll see the math where in in the site budgets, not the Central Office budget.
Yep, totally understand that. But what we're also seeing is ESER is no longer funding.
Correct. It's gone.
Which now is an increase to the operational budget.
Correct, and it's reflected in there.
So we do have, keep in mind, Steve, we have a number of situations at AES and FES where sections are being reduced simply because there are less kids. And so we're going from six sections, for example, to five sections.
Attrition.
Which therefore, which is considered attrition, which therefore allows for us to then slide in the former ESER position into our operating budget, so therefore it's not a new head.
So that's what I'm looking for.
Yes, I know.
All right, that's where, this is where I think we need to be.
Yep.
You know, as far as, we've we've talked about these positions from the ESER, right?
Right.
We need to account for that.
Yep.
In the operational budget, whereas not an increase.
Which it is.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So we can go into Asal Waza directly now. Apologies.
All right.
But but that should show at the sites and the projections for the upcoming year versus the current year.
So could I, could I just raise my hand?
Yeah.
Just deny. Sorry. On February 26th, there was a memo that I wrote that explains what the budget consists of. And bullet number, I'm sorry, I had surgery, but bullet number nine. Math specialists previously funded from ESER, which is ending September 24th, are included through attrition from ESER, I'm sorry, included through attrition and a reduction of paraprofessionals. Your budget through attrition and a reduction of six paraprofessionals in the budget are switching the funding sources around. So we have retirees.
Thank you.
Their salaries out, M3s are in.
Yep.
Attritions might be out. Not all are being replaced. And paraprofessionals, as you recall, through the district way and approach, we developed the budget. We did caseload by caseload by caseload through students matriculating through the district with all parties together in the room. So that's how we came up with the paraprofessional need as well as the class size.
Yep.
So if you're going through the sites, you're gonna see some of those changes.
Thank you.
There are positions where people are retiring that we are still filling.
Correct.
So for example, at the high school, music. We obviously are gonna, we're gonna replace Ed. It's tough to do, but we're gonna do it. So I don't want you thinking that every retirement means, we have attrition with non-renewals, people who have said they're not coming back, which we will, I will get you all of that.
Yeah, totally agree with that, but one of the pieces that we have said the last couple of years, this is great that we have the ESER fund. We have said that, and we've held strong, the fact of not using those ESER funds for operational, because many school districts that are hurting as a result of that. We have these three positions, right? What we don't want to do is have an increase of our, so the answer to bullet nine is the answer I'm looking for. It's just more the fact that we are offsetting through attrition.
Yes.
And through that, right? So it's not like there is a net three.
Exactly.
Right? That's what we don't want to do. So thank you.
Yep, and I think that was the information you were trying to, trying to deem. Yep, absolutely.
I just needed to dumb it down to my level, so thank you.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. All right, Asal Waza. I'll open up Asal Waza to the committee. Um, questions?
Can you everything?
Yep. Just for Asal Waza, Brenna.
Well, I have one.
Go ahead.
I noticed that there was a request for an adjustment counselor or a desire to have.
In our needs and wants.
Mm-hmm. And I'm just asking you experts here where COVID's impact was primarily, I hear the lion's share of the impact was like grades three and four. Um, I don't know if that's correct. You would. And and I, so we have them farther up. We have adjustment counselors, but the need has been identified at the lower grades, and we don't have any way of shifting anything over that way. Because I think it would be a good thing to have, is where I'm going with this.
Yeah, and we we had talked about, I think, let me pull up the wish list, because I think it's in the.
It was in the, at least the narrative.
Yeah.
So I believe that the initial discussion was an adjustment counselor at AES as well as at FLMS. Because again, the numbers, especially when you're looking at special education alone.
Exactly.
Um, show that the increased uh need, student need, in addition to the emotional
There you go.
support that is that is not only being emphasized by the Department of Ed, but also just the need as a result of the last four years, has increased. And and when you do look at the numbers, we can see that both schools could support the additional body or split between the two. So we're trying to see how we could allocate that.
So you are looking at that?
Possibly, yeah. Yeah, we're trying to explore.
I'm not trying to add here. I'm just looking at what I've read about where the needs are.
Yep.
And that seems to align very much with what the data indicate.
So we would have to consider, too, that finding someone that would be split between elementary and the campus and that grade span is gonna be difficult because you have travel between the two buildings. So we have to look at it from, obviously, a district-wide lens and maybe how we can spread out our resources so that we could add another body, but not have someone traveling across the town.
And in fairness, if we're gonna do it at AES, we need to do it at.
At FES, absolutely. Well, yeah, you're looking at what the data are showing and and where the need is. And that's where it came out of AES, and FES didn't indicate a need for that, but I mean, through your evaluation, that could shift, too.
It's true.
Yep. Yeah, and I think it's a great, I think it's a great data point to bring up, too, Gene, and thank you, and Ashley, thank you. I think it's a a good data point to bring up for the folks that look at our enrollment trends, right, and see them dip a little bit. Well, the the needs of the students that we do have in district, their needs are increasing even though our enrollment is decreasing, right? So so good call out there. Um, thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Brenna, and then Steve, Sylvia.
The social and emotional learning program, it says our teacher is in her fifth year. We begin the year with three students and are currently up to four. How does that differ from what an adjustment counselor is? I'm not, I don't know the difference between the two, but, so she only has four students.
So the adjustment counselor helps both general education and special education students, so the whole population of students with any kind of uh, regulation or emotional issues, right? So it could be brief check-ins, it could be counseling sessions. Um, those those, that personnel is also responsible for 504 coordination at the at the buildings, uh, specifically the elementary buildings. So it's very different than the AES SEL teacher, who is a program teacher and houses kids either all day or part of the day. So she is responsible for teaching content throughout the entire day to some, and then some of those kiddos who are a little bit more regulated are able to access inclusion classes, so they're able to go into a larger classroom, whereas maybe a couple other ones have to stay in that smaller setting all day. So she is the teacher that's responsible for the learning environment for those four kids, which ebbs and flows again, right? It's four now. It could be six next year. We just never know, right? Um, but she's responsible for the teaching and learning that happens on the day-to-day basis for the full classroom, for the full school day.
And the adjustment counselor is more like a traveling.
Correct, yeah. Check-ins, yeah, yeah.
Good question, Brenna. Uh, Steve?
If you could just just mention a pullout support for special ed, would that same scenario apply like as an adjustment counselor? Where you would look to potentially share with other schools, or is it a need for a full-time position? It's in the notes.
Do you want to speak to that, Bethany?
So I I just wanna say a little bit more about what the adjustment counselor does to add to what Mrs. Boulay said. So she also runs the backpack program. She meets with Nurse Nancy and does all the attendance, does all the letters, takes all of that off my plate. She runs the building-based support team, which is also a weekly meeting, again, the 504s. And then if you think about just the paperwork with all of that alone, um, that takes up so much of her time. Then there's the mandated um individual education plans that she also sees kids for, never mind any 504s, that she also. mind any 504s, that she also sees students for. And that's not even touching the general education population or any of the social emotional needs as we know that are just getting, they're just escalating, right? They're pervasive across the board in every classroom and in everything that we do. So that was high on the priority list for, you know, a wish list. And honestly, she's, acts as my vice principal as well. She, she, we, we team up everything pretty much every day, we kind of have a quick morning check-in, just like with Dr. Sullivan advocating for another adjustment counselor in her building. You know, without the vice principal, you know, and we talk all the time, but I'd really rather have another adjustment counselor that has the expertise to deal and work with students of social emotional need as opposed to myself, to be honest with you. So I would prefer definitely a student adjustment counselor. I would love a full-time one, that is what I would advocate for. I know Mr. Ward also talked about the need at his building, so we were thinking maybe even sharing across elementary because we have the same timeframe. So the other issue, right, with the middle school is that their timeframe is also different than the elementary timeframe. You know, but obviously we would take whatever we could get. So it is on there, if we need to split it with another school, that would be fantastic. If I could have my own at the elementary school, that would be fantastic as well. But the need is definitely there. If that answers your question.
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just the special ed component, that you mentioned need for pull-out support. In addition to a adjustment counselor?
So the pull-out support is particularly for academics, so individual education plans. We have several students in grade three, for example, that might be at like that first grade level. So to do inclusion for a half an hour really is not catching them up or giving them what they need. However, when you do do pull-out, right, you think about scheduling, right? Well, now you have these kids that come out and these kids that need inclusion, so now you're almost doubling the time, if that makes sense. And we just don't have the personnel to do that.
Thank you for that.
So one of the things, just to clarify and piggyback off of what Bethany is saying, is starting in fourth grade at grades, we have what we call a personalized learning program, where students who have lower cognitive abilities have access to a resource room setting for part or all of their day. With the idea of them building their academic skills so that they can move forward into a full inclusion setting with their regular ed peers. We don't have that at either one of the elementary schools, so it is, you know, part of the discussions that have been happening as to how we can build programming so it's consistent, and we have the full continuum from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade, because we do have it four through 12. So I think that's what you're referencing as well.
Yeah, just, I thank you for the clarification on that. Just one other question, and this is Mr. Ward will end up with this too. Your specialist schedule, do you want a four-day schedule or a five-day schedule?
Four.
You're on a four-day as well, so four specials, and I know you're looking for a five.
Five, yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. All right, thanks, just curious.
Thank you Bethany. Are we rolling into, I think Steve has a couple ASALWANZER questions, I'm sure. Mr. Ward, you should have known better.
Can you, can you talk about, as we took a look at the line item budget, could you clarify just for the wider audience, the stark increase in substitute line item?
So for substitutes throughout the district, what we did is there was this fabulous 10-year spreadsheet analysis that was done, that you basically update with the last year's 2023, you recalc it, you take a look at it, you throw out the high, you throw out the low, you throw out COVID, and you make some sort of analysis as to how to budget your substitutes. That's the approach that we took in all the substitute lines. There is increases in there because the average increases came out to that. After we did the analysis, throwing out what we could, say that we had a high year for whatever reason throughout COVID, but that's the actual averages reflected in the budget. Sickness, absences that occur not just with students, but our teachers and staff, maternity leaves, illness, parental, those kinds of leaves.
And a professional development, I assume.
Professional, you have to track, thank you, professional development needs have to be tracked separately as well.
And that increase doesn't even include the fact that our substitute took probably some of the lowest paid in the area.
Well, that was the secondary component for discussion with the school committee with respect to potentially increasing that as well. So that would be something to ask the director of finance to retake a look at that, if you indeed wanted to take a look and move from $90 a day to $100 a day, and what maybe your surrounding communities are also paying as it's difficult to attract and retain the substitute level.
Dr. Sullivan, I just want to make that call up. How many subs do you have, Dr. Sullivan?
One.
Yeah.
Just a general statement here, I know we have instituted a lot of programs in the past few years about consumables, but I don't see a lot of consumables being budgeted. So I want to make sure that we are adequately supplying consumables to these programs that we have, right? So.
You'll see. So there were a couple conversations that we had with principals regarding what I'm calling those shells, that they were said, they said textbooks, and now they say textbook slash consumables, because that's what all the consumables really were. Technology has taken a place of a lot of the consumables and manipulatives, but there was also a great conversation with principals that Terry gets those out of Title I. So whenever we went and had those conversations, I would come back to the office and say, all right, Terry, where are you hiding manipulatives and supplies? And then we would make those adjustments as we, we needed to from that perspective.
Terry doesn't get them all out of Title I. To be clear, we're targeted assistance, so I do not get them all out of Title I.
Yeah, it's a slippery slope, right? I want to, I want to be careful, we're moving so many things online that we're now imposing, pardon my French, a crap load of screen time for students, especially at the primary grade level.
So manipulatives, if you, like the term consumable is, is random, if you will. So we buy consumables for science, so that there's hands-on science going on in the, in the classrooms. We buy consumables that are the, the, I, workbooks, the student books for, for math. Those are tear-out pages and, and have the ability to be handed out and spread out over time. And then you have consumables, well, in this line item are also manipulatives, which are not consumables, but they are like the hands-on components for, for example, this year we bought math and movement mats, and we bought additional ten frames and, and magnetic supplies for each of the classrooms, for them to do manipulatives on the, on the boards. So consumables is a, is a general term for this that's used, and the buildings, and I work hard to decide what we can use, and then when there are funds available through whatever resources, high-quality instructional materials grant also provided for some materials, and then we decide what that purchase looks like equitably, so that every third-grade classroom got this, every first-grade classroom got this.
Okay.
But I won't let the science fall off, don't worry.
Sorry.
I won't let the science fall off.
Good. That stuck out to me was a decrease in instructional supplies. My concern is, the last time we had instructional supplies, the following year we got this huge list of parents about, these are all the supplies I need for your child to go to school.
Right.
And it was a little bit, I don't want to go back to that, we can't go back to that. So I'm hopeful that decrease in those supplies is not going to be a direct correlation to.
Parents are not going to have to buy.
Okay, great.
Well, sometimes the consumables go down the paper. General supply line.
Maybe the reduction of supplies is the less amount of paperwork we send home at the beginning of the year.
Would be nice, less work teams, more hands-on.
Not to parents. So one of the other big things that just stuck out to me as we look at.
Deb, I got one more, go ahead, finish.
As we look at AES and FES is equity. We have, the committee has really fought to make sure that what we have at one school is at the other, so the K to three is the same, and the one big example is the media specialist that we now have, that would not have, it's been in there for the last couple of years. So I want to be careful as we introduce something at one school, we need to factor in how that'll be introduced at both schools, right? Because, you know, and I know we do have the social emotional classroom that supports both free town and Lakeland students, but that has to be included in the budget, because when, when one school presented, that's only half the cost, because we need to look at both schools in that, so. Because I know there's some wishes and needs that are a little bit different, but we need to look at both schools as far as that stuff. So I will, I will pause the air before we go on to FES.
That's a good call up. Deb, you did have a question?
We have the ESER teacher and the math specialist, I see that was being taken out and being put back in on the line below. When we go to the change line, it looks like, it looks like the ESER teacher's back in as an increase in the budget. So I'm just confused, are we adding a new teacher, or are we just absorbing the ESER teacher into the budget?
We're absorbing the ESER teacher into the budget.
On page three, it says.
Please let me know if something comes up, Deb. If you see something, let me know. Okay.
On page three, there's a salary adjustment counselor. Is the requested adjustment counselor in addition to this?
Yes.
Okay, would they start at the same salary, or would it be different?
Depends on use of experience.
Right, okay.
It depends, that's a good answer.
And then one more clarification question. The reduction of six paraprofessionals, are any of them impacted at AES?
So we have.
So it's not necessarily the reduction. So every year we have to do a needs assessment as to how many paraprofessionals we need based on support in classrooms and support for individual students. And we're coming up to that in about a week's time, or we have to look at that. And looking tentatively at the predictions for next year, we're looking like we may have, have six short than what we currently have this year.
These are one-to-one paraprofessionals?
It's a variety of all kinds of professional, paraprofessionals. I mean, there really is no label to paras in the district according to the contract, so it is six paraprofessionals.
Let me ask the question a little bit, are the, any of these grade-level paraprofessionals?
Well, there's no such thing as a grade-level paraprofessional according to our contract.
Is there any of these paraprofessionals that are assigned to a particular grade impacted? So we have a, at grade two, we have a, a paraprofessional that supports all sections. Are any of those type of paraprofessionals impacted?
Possibly.
I have a concern with that, but let's, let's address that when we start to fill this out, but.
Yep, we can, we can certainly discuss that. Do we want to address that now, or do we want to address that?
I, I think as we get more information in the next week in their evaluation, right, we're, we're going with a, the kindergarten has a one-to-one, a paraprofessional per classroom.
Yep.
And then grade one, two, and three have that, I know we can't differentiate the kind of, but that grade-level para. There, there is to support students and not be pushed to a one-to-one type, right? These are more to, to help with other students in the classroom. So that was a, a big component here, so if we're changing them, that goes against to what we've been supporting for years from a school committee perspective. So I'd like, just like to understand that as we look at, because I believe we have that all the way up to grade K, to five, grade five.
No. No.
No, we do not have it in the grades.
So, that's what I mean, we have.
But the narrative here says there's one in grade.
And I have free town of third grade, they come to me in fourth grade, and there's one para, one para.
Yep, so, sorry, for the clear. We have one para supporting all sections in grade four.
Correct.
We have one para supporting all sections in grade five. That's consistent with grades.
No, it's not. The reason that it's not is Michael's third grade has a para, Bethany's third grade has a para, all those children come to Liz, they have one para.
Down to half.
One para. Town one has a para, town two has a para, they come to me, they have one para.
Right.
Ten sections.
And I think it highlights, folks, the, the conversations that we're going to be having moving forward, right? In, in my opinion, I think the, the leadership team has the ability, we, we obviously recommend, we're on budget, right? They have the ability, they get paid to make the educational decisions, right? To best utilize the resources that we're giving them. And, and I think we have to allow them to do that, so I think it's definitely something that warrants a lot more conversation moving forward, as far as the utilization of paras. But you're right, Steve and Jean, to your point, paras are something that we have taken, we, we've been building back up, building back up, building back up, building back up. Well, here we are, and we have a decision to make, right? With those ESER positions going away, do we want a math, do we want a math specialist? Or do we want potentially a para that might not be utilized for their best capabilities within the building on their day-to-day? Those are the conversations, the tough conversations that we have to have, and certainly welcome having them as, as the leadership team continues the plan. But that's my thoughts.
I would just add, at the beginning of last year, we had to add two paras.
That was, those were individual student-assigned paras.
Right, but they weren't in the, we had to do that. That came, so just sometimes the assessment switches when things switch.
Of course, of course, yes.
Right.
And I would only add, I mean, that's the essence of the needs assessment. I, I think I have an open mind on that, that given the needs of, of the students have changed, and staff for that matter, I think that there should be some discretion at the sites to control the paras. But it's certainly a, a conversation, we have supported that for a grade level in the past.
Absolutely.
I think times have changed, and I think it's time we probably adapt a little bit on that.
And I don't disagree, but part of the reason is, is to support the higher achieving students that we need to do, right? So that's what we wanted to do, and I know there's no differentiation between the type of paras in the contract, but that was the intent, you know, for that, to make sure that we do that. The other piece, as we talk about the dynamic, I know, student, we are having the two largest grade levels leave the elementary school and going up to the middle school. So as we, we talk that through, that needs to be taken in consideration here, as far as what the numbers look like. Unfortunately, we have this concrete block at the middle school that we can't sort of, the other flow of adding teachers, you know, for, just because of how the school is, is set up. But, you know, how are we controlling the number of sections and class size?
You mean the fourth and fifth grade?
What's that?
You mean the fourth and fifth grade, the intermediate.
Correct, yeah, the intermediate school, sorry.
Right, okay.
So.
When we did our class size calculation predictions, they came out similar to this year by like tenths of a student.
Because fifth grade has got a pretty good size, so we've looked at it.
All right. Can.
Teacher you're talking about, because I can't hear you back here.
What was your, your question?
About the teacher, you said your teachers are something, is it ESER? ESER, so we had ESER funds that helped us to bring on three interventionist or specialists. We couldn't hear about this teacher, but it's back here.
Ms. Nigga, I think that's the first time someone's ever told me I'm not loud enough. I'll, I'll speak up for sure.
We can hear you.
Yep.
I can hear you, great.
Mr. Ward. Oh, Bethany, go ahead, I apologize.
Esther, can I just add one thing about those paraprofessionals?
Yes.
Just to kind of like paint a picture in your head, so we just talked about no personal learning program at the elementary level. So again, we do have students that, and there's not a lot, but we have students that are reading significantly below grade level, for example, or their math skills are getting significantly below. So you picture that student gets a half an hour of a special educator in the classroom, they get a half an hour of services, that special educator leaves. Now you have a classroom teacher with 20 students, and you have a few kids reading at first grade level in grade three, with no tech support. So they're now in a classroom with one teacher and 20 students, and they're not able to read or access the curriculum or what's happening. I mean, are they making progress? Of course, they're getting specialized goals serviced, but they're not making the progress that they need to make. So we are looking for some discretion in terms of using paraprofessionals, as again, we talk about MCAS and all of this stuff, and our heaviest needs being that that high-needs group, it's really hard to support them when we're governed to having to have grade-level powers. Grade-level powers are fantastic, they're fabulous. My third grade para takes enrichment groups and reads those novel studies. Is it fantastic? Absolutely. But sending Dr. Sullivan nine kids that are reading at first grade level in fourth grade, it's just really hard. So we're trying to balance. first grade level in fourth grade, it's just really hard. So we're trying to balance what and how we use those paraprofessionals.
Very valid point. So here's the part I'm struggling with, right? So for months, there's been internal budget discussions, and you're coming and making a very valid point that I need paraprofessionals. But here I am in full at nine. They were offsetting by eliminating a reduction-
I don't I don't think that's what she's saying.
But we're talking paraprofessionals. To go back to your point, there's no differentiation for paraprofessionals.
Correct. So she's saying, why would we not take the resources from somewhere else in the building and put them more where our focus is for increasing support?
So so what we're stating here is, I have a student that is reading above average, but we're not going to challenge them a little bit more because that's what the purpose of those grade-level paras were.
The difference is that a teacher is, and I'm not, you know, knocking teachers, but a teacher is more able to give projects or give project-based learning for enrichment because those kids usually can work for a few minutes like by themselves. The teacher goes back in, she does a quick check-in, gets them on track, goes back to her lower kids. You know, they're multitasking all day, but those kids reading below grade level and that have deficits, they can't do that. They need a teacher or someone with them all the time to make progress and be able to do the work. So again, they're just that's where the discretion is, that we want to just be able to use paras to what we feel the biggest need is. That's all we want.
And I think I would add to that point, that part of thoughtful intervention with paras will then allow the classroom teacher to differentiate for the kids that are really doing well.
Correct.
So it's a better use of resources.
Correct.
Yes.
If we're able to see it.
Yes. So we're not asking for additional. We just want to be able to take what we have and utilize them to where they're needed.
You'll improve the teacher impact in in the whole class.
Which, in my opinion, is a you decision. It's not an us decision.
No, that's what she said.
Right, correct. And and I'll just ask you a loaded question, too, to just hammer the point home, and maybe Mike and Bethany, you know. Given how our paras are currently structured, and I think you've answered this, Bethany, already, do you feel like we're getting the best bang for our buck with that current structure?
No, especially because of, and again, I'll speak for just Freetown myself because I know the paras and I know the staffing, but they're they're, you know, they're amazing paras that can sit with small groups and teach and, you know, there's so much that they can do. So again, I don't want to minimize the enrichment piece because that's not what I'm saying. So are we getting the biggest bang for our buck? Again, they're very valuable in any way, shape, or form. But when we look at the biggest need, and again, it is that high-needs group, and again, that picture, I feel like, is perfect if they get a half an hour of support PLA, and then they're on their own for the the remainder of the day, except when the teacher, which the teachers do an amazing job in differentiating, is right there with them. And then those students might go into that PLP when they go up to Dr. Sullivan that has the resources for them.
I'll have to go back to this para piece and on the paint picture of what it looks like at grade. You can really make the image in your head because while they have the grade-level ones, there's nothing for special education. So I'll explain that if you want to get through the other school.
And Mike can talk more about paras. This isn't the same.
So we can talk about it in committee, but there's a reason why this was implemented many years ago. And I understand things have changed or what have you, but there was a big focus on the high needs, and we were not addressing the other end of the spectrum as far as challenging. So that's a key component that we need to make sure that we do.
But paras aren't certified or trained to-
Correct.
-provide that instruction in teaching. That's on the teacher to differentiate and provide that. It's on the paras to support.
Yep. And in that, yeah, to that to that vein, I think you'd be very hard-pressed to find a school anywhere around us that uses paras to push our higher-level students.
Right.
But go ahead. Let's compare us to other schools, right? We just had a comparison point there. So we're not saying we follow those models here, but-
It just doesn't happen in education. Mr. Ward, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the community, but also say thank you for the constant support you have. So I just want to clarify for the committee that I know Mrs. Fox, in the narrative that was written up here, and we're going to go right into Mr. Sylvia's point about the STEM position that I'm asking for, and I'm passionate about this. I asked for it last year, showing up again, and the same points were brought up, right, from Mr. Owen's point about, well, Mr. Ward, if we're asking for it at FES, then equity across the board makes sense for AES and grades as well, if we think about it from that point. But even as you just heard, the two fantastic upon-a-quit students just speak about STEM careers and how that shows up within their work. And then you just heard Mrs. Fleming about the Student Opportunity Act, about the state and being curious and being creative, you know, with their thinking, and then engaging with the real world, and then exposing them to their strengths or potential interests in the years to come. It makes sense to me with this STEM position that I keep asking for. I also, Mr. Sylvia, as you just said, we are on a four-day schedule. We have five units. If I get a fifth for logistical purposes, if we get a fifth in a specialist area here, then that allows for not only the students all for a grade level to go out to specials, but allows our teachers. I can't tell them what to do during prep time. However, I've been around Freetown Elementary for quite some time now, and I have every reason to believe that they pop into each other's rooms. They have collaborative conversations. So it's valuable time for them because that's one of the things they're constantly asking for is, hey, we just want more time to collaborate. And they have time to collaborate, but since we're five units and four, I've got to I I stagger it. So we have like two at one time or three at another time, like within that grade level that have an opportunity. But if all five could be together and be able to meet on their own time at their own discretion, it just allows for obviously meeting students' needs in a in a greater way. So this is where, for obvious reasons, just the benefits of STEM education, I've already talked about real-world application, just critical thinking skills. We talk about safe places, and we all know when it comes to science and math areas, it's okay to make a mistake. We're going to do an experiment, and it's not going to go exactly the way that we planned. And that's what school's about. It's okay. We're, yes, we want it to go your way. That's our hope and dream. But let's be honest, that's we're going to have to rethink this and have a conversation and be collaborative within our own classrooms with students. And then, Mrs. Fox, where you were just talking about the the school adjustment council, when we get to, Mr. Strauss asked for a needs list, that's where you saw the student SAC come on up for Freetown Elementary School for all the reasons that Ms. Penault eloquently shared and whatnot. And to add to all of that piece about backpacks, and there's lunch bunch groups that take place during that time and just servicing the needs of students. And then just, and I know Ms. Penault certainly can speak to this as well, but just as a resource for families, if a child is in crisis, like where are the resources after that, having those conversations? And those conversations, as we all know, they're not five-minute conversations. This is pretty highly emotional conversations that they need, that they're engaged with, that that is obviously necessary. But certainly, I just wanted to make sure that I just clarified where the narrative it shows up and then where it shows up in the needs list as well. So I certainly, I think that's just to clarify for people who are watching at home as well. So I think that's sort of there if you have any questions.
Yeah. That's great, Mr. Ward. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Ward and Freetown Elementary School?
Yeah, mine was STEM. You already answered it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good.
So actually, to what Steve said earlier, where if we do something at one school, we have to do it at the other. If we do a STEM teacher at Freetown, are we doing a STEM teacher at upon-a-quit next year?
No.
Ask the one thing, excuse me. The vision would be if we were to do STEM teachers, it would be to be at all pre-K to five. So it would be all three.
All three.
So just to be clear.
But if we start, so one of the things that we could pursue, and this is where we're talking about wishes and and ideas and vision, right? If if we were to look into just focusing on one of the buildings, being a regional district, it makes it difficult to to quantify, but there are innovative grants out there that allow for a STEM focus. We could start that process if we can't budget for that process because all of these things are additional funds that are not currently in the budget sheet. So so there are ways to do that. But yes, ideally, we are bringing in equitably a STEM program, like STEM learning into our media, tuning our media centers into STEM learning centers.
Which could be seen.
Yep.
Yes, of course. And I know I'm still like, yes, of course.
Yes.
Britton, did that answer your question?
It did, but it wasn't comforting, if that makes sense. Because you're looking at a salary five times over for something that, I don't mean this disrespectfully, they're little kids. Like STEM is definitely important. Don't get me wrong on that, but I don't know. I don't know if it's something that teachers could do a workshop for and learn how to do a STEM curriculum. I don't, I just, it's difficult for me to conceptualize a specialist in STEM for eight-year-olds. And that's just because I don't work with kids.
It's it's a whole certification now.
That's where it's coming.
It's actually a full certification now. WPI runs a full certification. It is a licensure category now because of the complexities and the additional information that goes into engineering and robotics and computer literacy. So that digital literacy piece and learning how to code and learning about the frameworks of it. So they start in the elementary, like this is a whole school committee meeting on on STEM development, right? And I'm I'm more than happy to expand on that for hours of what we could do. But we do start, and our media specialists are doing a wonderful job of of starting. Our librarians, I keep using the term media center because that's what I want it to turn into. In fact, you know, we have green screens coming and we, you know, like teaching them in small steps is happening, but it's a full program if we want to do it right.
There are, there are STEM experiences that are happening. I think Mrs. Saint in science at your school and some really good things that are happening. I think it's really about if we're going to look to provide the best opportunities, we can't be having kids understanding STEM when they get to seventh grade or when they get to sixth grade. It really needs to be, you know, a scaffolded approach so that by the time they're in high school, they're really going out to internships. They're they're going out and and doing some of this work that they're not going to be able to be at that level because they're not starting until sixth grade. But there's a cost associated with it.
Right.
And that's the bottom line.
Okay.
Steve?
I think we can, Mr. Ward, I appreciate the projected chart as far as, can we get the same thing for SOOM? I think we can read, you know, first, second, and third, but I'd be curious to see what the projected for kindergarten would be. Because this is, this is going to be a conversation all the way to June, just because, or even September, because some parents wake up and say, oh, I have a six-year-old that I need to register or something to that. But if, do we have the curriculum already for a STEM program at the primary grades, or is that something additional that needs to be brought in?
We have that, Mr. Owen, we do not have it.
We do have components of it. Some are open resource, and there has been some trainings on something similar to Tufts Novel Engineering, which includes literacy and engineering together. It's through WPI Seeds of STEM and IMSTEM. So there have been some introductions to it, and there are Common Sense Media provides for some free resources. Code.org provides for some. Scratch Junior, like there are pieces that we could implement, and the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Digital Literacy Review Team this year is looking at ways to embed those small pieces into the students' opportunities in the media centers for this upcoming year. But purchase of robotics, a purchase, you know, there are material purchases that would have to happen to really round out a robust program.
And as I said when I was talking previously, three years ago, well, let's eliminate COVID. Prior, we would have qualified for grants that we are no longer even allowed to apply for because we do not qualify.
Correct.
And and so it's made it much more complex. The reality, if you read the Student Opportunity Act and what it said on the bottom, funding is going to schools that are significant, districts that are significantly larger than us. And so we're paying the price for that, too.
Okay. If if we, the only way that this would go to your five-day schedule as an advantage, if there was one teacher at FES doing that, it not be a shared resource, could you take advantage of it? Am I reading that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
It would have to, for me to get to there, but if if we're going to take a shared one, and that's a possibility, then that's, we'll create a schedule from there. So just being honest, we'll take it.
At FES, would you prefer a STEM program or more pull-out resources?
Yes.
Prioritize it for me.
Pull-out services.
Like additional resources for-
Being like ELA, like math, the-
What is, what is, repeat?
So if I prefer pull-out services or a STEM.
You only can add one. Prioritize it.
I mean, that's deep, but that's deep, but I'm-
Welcome to the real world.
Listen, I took on this role responsibility for that, right? So I'm going to say pull-out services.
And again, I'm I'm fully, I think this is a fantastic idea. Don't get me wrong. I I just questioned the timing with all the other pieces that we have, and I do think that we need to look at this more holistically than we're looking at K to five, right? Even if we, and I believe that we even looked at starting a program at one school, we moved to another school, right? So how do we make sure that we have that equity across the three elementary schools, right, K to five? So that's my big concern. You know, sorry. Okay. On some of the the line item pieces, we talked about the subs increases. Can we just clarify for the majority the difference between interventionalists and specialists?
I'll take that one because it took me 10 months. No, just kidding. So the specialists, the way the shelves work and the way Tyler works, the specialists are art, music, PE, and reading. Now there'll be math. The reading interventionists were the ESR-funded positions that did-
Reading specialists.
All right, so Terry.
Specialist and the interventionist that is a three to seven-point-five hours per week. Was that correct?
All right, Terry, why don't you?
That's the connotation.
Yeah, no, right. Terry, why don't you handle that then?
I I just want to say that the reading specialists are on that line, but they were not ESR-funded there. The other part of their salary is Title I funded.
Title I funded, that's it?
Yep.
Yes, there has.
Yep.
And they were individual. There were multiple people who were doing point two.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ward and FES before we move forward? Sure.
This is showing the preschool teacher being cut, so that there's only a maybe half of a preschool teacher? What are what are we doing with that?
That was from previous case. It's the last year.
Last year, we added a point-five preschool teacher at the nth hour.
Yeah.
As I ran around and did the math, and Steve was on the computer and I was waving at him. That was on the 24th of April. Because of enrollment at the time and evaluations and all of that kind of thing, that teacher did not end up being hired because in September, the numbers weren't there. So it's not a cut. It's a need adjustment, if you will.
So we're only having a half of a preschool teacher?
No. Where's the other one?
Are they United 4142? We only had a point-five. We were only hiring a point-five.
Right, but when you look at the budget, you only might have been $28,000 for a preschool teacher. Was that a full teacher? Have you hired that hard to leave?
It was a shift.
Oh, so that's the, that's a different line from the point-five pre-K. So yes, the other half of that teacher comes out of our our grant.
Oh, okay. So it was a full teacher?
Yes.
Yep. Not not half a human.
94142. So so the grant, Deb, is 94142, which is a federal grant. So I don't want you to, as we said, that's not a competitive grant. That's not in every year. It's a federal. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Freetown Elementary School before we move on? Hearing none? Moving on. Dr. Sullivan.
So I'm, the list for grades that they're the two special education teachers, so that's compliance. So you probably don't have any questions on that. But if I can take this opportunity to paint my picture on the paraprofessional thing, because what Steve brought up really, I think, brings clarity to a lot of people when I say the two towns. So Steve, when you, when you talk about the grade-level para, when I came from the middle school to the intermediate school, that whole model sort of threw me, like, who are these two people that I have? One in fourth grade, one in fifth grade. So you'll see me do this because I'm doing the corridors. In fourth grade right now, I have 10 homerooms, full, 24 children roughly in each, okay? Six of those homerooms service children who are on IEPs. So let's say I'm teacher A on a team. I have 24 children in my classroom. 14 are not serviced by IEPs, seven are. My partner's next door, exact same scenario. 17 children not on IEPs, seven that are. Then we have a special education teacher who's dedicated to us. Then we have a special education teacher who's dedicated to us. She may or may not be in this room because she may or may not be in this room. She may not be in either room. She may be in pullout in her own room across the hall, which leaves one teacher with 24 children, seven on IEPs, and the other one in the same scenario. That's happening in six rooms in fourth grade right now. Is one paraprofessional who is more often than not, based on last year's number, a substitute because they don't have any. So definitely the fifth-grade paraprofessional, more than 90 days last year, she served as a substitute. So sometimes they're wiped out of the, the play all along, right along. Next year, so the same thing is happening in fifth grade, but in four home, four homerooms. Four homerooms have roughly 16 children not on IEPs, roughly six or seven on IEPs with that same scenario happening. The special educator may or may not be in one of those rooms and, you know, for each portion of the day. So that's what we have, one and one. What I'm asking for is one, one paraprofessional to be dedicated to each special education teacher because we will have three. We need to have three, like we do now in fourth grade. That group will now go up to fifth and they will be three, three teams with two classes with special educators. So three out of five teams will have special education services in both grades next year. So what I'm, what I would like to see is the model where the special, each special education teacher has a paraprofessional dedicated to her, but they are also, to your point, Steve, servicing the other, the other classes that don't. There's a schedule that they will rotate through and help those classes too. But when you think about it, in a, in a day's time, how much could even two paraprofessionals, how much can they devote to each one of those classrooms that's of any significance? That's what explains the paraprofessional piece. And it took, it actually took me after the first year to realize, wait a minute, how is this happening? The two towns coming together and I get one. The two towns coming together, I should have gotten the two over the last eight years I've been there. So that, that's where my piece is on the powers. Is there, is there clarity there with that explanation? Question for me, Steve?
Can you just remind me, 10 sections in one grade, is that self-contained or is there a team approach?
It's a team approach. So there's a, there's one teacher that, there's, there are five English social studies teachers and five science math teachers and they work as a team. So the children, there's 24 in one room, 24 in the other, and halfway through the day they flip-flop.
Okay. John, you had a question?
I did, and I apologize, Dr. Sullivan, I knew you just said it. How often would you say that your paraprofessionals are functioning as a substitute?
I would say close, last, based, based on the numbers last year, I know that, that Celeste Mizu Dulakis in fifth grade, I believe it was 91 days out of 100. So it's, I'm going to say we're probably pretty close to that. Probably, do you, do you have any idea, Deidre, from the, looking at it from the budget standpoint, how often I'm doing the step-up pay for the powers?
I'm sorry, the step-up pay for the powers?
Yeah, well, we're talking about how often they're, they're paid as teachers because they step up as substitutes.
That I do not know.
I say, it's a lot. It's a lot. Like I said, I know that, I know that Celeste was 90 days last year and I think it's probably, it's probably trending towards that now.
So you have, so the, if I, just to quickly ask, you currently have five special education teachers between the two grades, correct?
Yes. Well, we, but then we have those two personalized learning programs, so we have two others.
So grade-level special education.
The grade-level special education.
Is that articulated in the contract that way? I'm just kidding.
Return mode.
So right now you have two powers. You are advocating for a program that there would be a power per, for a special education teacher.
Yes. Yes. And in those, in each grade, there's also the personalized learning program. So those youngsters that have that base where they, they made it in a little extra support in something, there's a paraprofessional dedicated to each of those classes based on their numbers. So their numbers warrant more than just a teacher in the classroom, so there's a paraprofessional there. And then we have one student who has a one-to-one power in the building. Now, years ago, I had a lot of powers in the building, but they were dedicated to the life skills program with those students. So it looked like a lot of powers, but they weren't servicing the needs of the general
The big concern with these numbers, right? 50% of it is we're already taking away from student services because they're acting as a substitute. So how, how are we addressing that from a substitute perspective?
Increase the substitute rate.
One of the reasons. We're paying $90. Eighty for a power, but most of our, I know, you don't like to hear it, Steve, but we're talking anywhere between 105 and 110 to 125 for substitutes in the area. So what's happening is we're getting college kids, we're getting, because we see them come in, and it's, it's more and more college kids who are off education, so they have limited time periods. But I've had adults simply say, I'm not doing this for that amount of money.
We have been fortunate during the breaks and especially when they get out earlier in the year, and, and Mrs. Strauss has pushed them through fairly quickly. I've had a lot of former students, I've had a lot of staff members, children who are home from college. But that's when they're home from school.
So is that, is that going to come before the committee as far as a increase rate?
Yes.
Okay, because right now, if you do a quick math, some of the schools, it's below minimum wage.
Yeah.
They've been saying this for years.
Absolutely.
That's why we're going to increase the rate. Why we can't get them.
Now, for a long-term sub, so for example, a long-term sub.
We've solved that, we've solved that.
Right, that has been solved.
Well, not solve it, but we moved in the right direction.
And secondly, it's you have to be here a certain amount of days and then your pay goes up to 150. Now, we've used long-term subs who have been subs in our building, so we know them. We don't need to go from day, we don't need to wait 10 days or 20 days because we know their effectiveness.
Right.
But I, just to close a little bit, I want to definitely have that on the discussion, but while it may have been asked for years, but I don't think we've ever been presented with an option to increase the rate at least for the past three, four years, right? So even before COVID, I could be losing a few brain cells, but I don't think we've been ever presented with, hey, hey, we need to fix this up. So let's bring that to the table, let's have that discussion.
So if I remember, in, in speaking with former superintendent, when I first got here, it had been raised to $90.
Yes.
I believe it was at 75, if I remember correctly.
Outside of principals having numbers in their rolodex for subs that may not answer the phone, is there like a, an application that we use, you post?
Yeah.
And do they run, I'd love to see if, A, what we pay for that, but B, what's the, is that returning anybody? Like if you post an absence, what's the return rate on that?
So how many teachers apply in, like how many, what's our rate that people apply for those?
Like a success rate?
So we have seven, let's say we have seven teachers that are absent. We have 20 teacher, 20 substitutes throughout the district in, in this pool. I'm going to tell you, they're going to choose other districts first.
Of course they are.
Because they get more money. And, and that's what it comes down to.
So we're doing a lot of coverage in buildings.
Which takes powers out of the...
Well, at the high school, it takes teachers out of their planning period.
Okay, that's another agenda topic.
Yeah. Just to talk about class size, I know in recent years, Dr. Sullivan, we always assume that the number, we would have our fuzzy math of the number of students at third grade, numbers within the fourth grade, and then there's been an increase. It seems like your projected is flatlined.
Yeah, it looks like it should. I was concerned last year and Al and I had a lot of conversations about it and over the summer I was, you know, we looked at, we, we were looking at fourth grade coming in at about 24, which is what it is. And all summer long, when my secretary was saying, I have a new registration, I have a new registration, we had 15 new registrations, I think. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's what it was. And one was a fourth grader. Every day I'd say, oh, please say fifth grade, please say fifth grade. So, and we actually, what's coming in and what's going out, we're, we're pretty much even. So we're in the same, if we have a lot of move-ins, there, there may need to be a bigger discussion, but right now we, we look, we're looking right where we are now.
Which is why we agreed to no school choice for grades four and five. We just didn't...
Agreed to what, sorry?
Which is why we decided collectively to have no school choice for grades four and
Go ahead, Steve.
It says you have no guidance department. Who does guidance stuff?
I don't have a guidance department. That's why, that was part of the big, the big presentation that I was able to do last year for the second school adjustment counselor.
Who does the guidance stuff, the adjustment counselor?
Like scheduling and, and those sorts of things?
Great. Not great, but...
It's fine.
Thank you for doing it.
It's doable. Thank you.
All right. Are we good to move forward to the middle school? Jackson's not here. Do you want to push Jack to next week and just tackle the high school?
Sure.
I do, because I got to get out of here.
Yep.
I do, I have a dog in jail. Well, yes, and it's been hours and hours and hours. Yeah, I meant that jail is a place.
Okay.
Torture.
All right.
When will that be next week?
Uh, our next school committee meeting is in two weeks.
Okay, and that's when you'll be here?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Nope, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm not asking for any more personnel. We, we continue to put in more programming and we find the resources, we change and we move as we do that and we constantly, you know, analyze, looking at enrollment and programming and that kind of thing. So not looking for that. We would like a late...
I will say that a conversation that needs to, we need to start thinking about, not for this budget cycle, but moving forward, eventually, Mr. Cabusio will no longer be athletic director, eventually.
Yeah, we're going to have to have that.
And we are going to have to have a full-time athletic director, which is a significant change for where we've been for years because he is a part-time, although he works full-time hours. So it's just something as we move forward that I just want you to keep in the back of your mind. Has nothing to do with this year's budget and next year's budget.
But it's on that list of things, like the new growth in the communities and then this, all that stuff needs to be on a list so we can strategize going forward because it's not in here.
That's absolutely something we're going to have to, have to address. Yep.
We are, we, we have agreed, and I think it was started in '22, with paying half the AP exams, so that should help. You know, the question becomes, I put, we put on a means list about paying the entire thing. It is an expensive test. If kids are taking six, that's a lot of money.
Yep.
Even if we're paying half.
And on that wish list, we also need to continue to look at, even if it's not twice a week, a late bus. We did hold a meeting today, all the ninth-grade teachers, to talk about those kind of things. It didn't just come from the state, from the Student, you know, Advocate Act. It, it was instead, you know, from the school base saying they are missing something, ninth graders. What can we do for transition? We've done our TNT, which has made a bit, had a big effect, but when it comes down to it, we have socioeconomic disparities in this community and students who cannot stay after school. Students who cannot be part of the rest of the fabric of the school. And I, and I really think, and we really decided today that the late bus is one way to do that, even if we're talking about one day a week. So that's something I want to keep...
How many, we used to have at least two.
We had two.
We did. I remember that.
How many years ago was that?
Quite a few now. Yeah. About 10 years ago. It's been a long time. Well, we put it every year on the wish list, but I just wanted to mention that because here we were again, having a conversation about how to support ninth graders and those teachers sitting in that room and all the things they do, and we talked about other things, said it's partially about, you know, the haves and the have-nots and the students who cannot feel that way, that belonging because they can't ever do those extra things. And then it adds to chronic absenteeism. So it's about belonging. So I just, it was reiterated again about how important that piece is, looking forward for things that we need.
Questions?
I always challenge you to look at the high school budget when we look at course offerings two months from now, right? So at this point in time, do you know of any major course shifts that we're expecting in the new year that would be encompassed in this budget?
It is, but it does not change anything in the budget. I did present those with the program of studies. We've now put in AP seminar. We now have, this year we had one 10th grade AP, now we'll have three of those. We have some other electives that will displace, you know, some of the others, you know, by interest. And right now, the guidance counselors are doing scheduling and as soon as we have that, we'll be able to make some of those choices. You know, if we have a low enrollment in something, there are other things that will have a higher enrollment, we'll make those choices. But none of it should be affected by budget. Should, none of it should affect the budget.
Which is a positive, and I think I said that at our meeting, that it is very difficult to add classes without adding teachers, but the high school's done a good job. We have asked the high school to start looking at the trends of three years of courses that have less than 10 students. And do we pull that and rotate it? So we are going to start having that conversation. It was late this year, but next year, if we have a class, class X, that for three straight years had 10, 11 or less, we will pull that class. It's not pulling teachers, but it, there needs to be a, a different thought process into how we're offering courses. Because courses of seven or eight does not help the schedule.
Correct.
It makes it very complex.
So we've talked about like an A and B kind of schedule. We do that already with Java and Python, for instance, our coding. But now that we have 43 students taking AP Computer Science, which we did not have the year before, it should feed that. So that's why it's a three-year one. So we've, we've done a two-year deep dive on that analysis and we're continuing to look at it.
I, I know the, to go back to the buses, I know that's been an ask, and we've always gone back and say, what does this look like, right? So we have large footprints here. Even one bus trying to cover the entire footprint of Free Towne-Layville, you're talking about 7:30 drop-off hours, right? Or, or later. So how do we work through that piece? So I know that's something that we've sort of challenged in that, and I can see the benefits of adding a bus. And so I would even go back to, does that type of bus get covered in our regional transportation fund?
The late bus?
The late bus?
Do you get me embarrassed for it?
Yes.
I don't believe so. Kara, I wouldn't think so either. It's a luxury for your people.
Do we have to tell them it's a late bus?
I was just going to say, if we don't tell Jay, he'll never know.
I'd also like to experiment with the idea of our early dismissal of common planning time, the middle school bus being able to pick our students up. I would say grades buses, but there's too much disparity in age with the middle school ones, that that would give one day, even if we did it once a month because our students, our teachers are in common planning, but giving one day where clubs could be offered to those students, you know, to all students and then go home in that middle school bus. Just looking for solutions. I'm, I'm, maybe it's not the right time, just throwing things out. We had a great meeting today and it just, it's around that kind of thing.
Yeah, no, I, I mean...
Why do guidance counselors go up so much?
I know.
I don't.
You go.
No, I'll let you go.
Okay.
I do know.
Certainly, the guidance counselors have their steps and their lanes that they change, so most of it is because of that. But we have a shift that we have to make in this budget, moving an FTE from the high school. I believe I'm putting it into the middle school with Jack, but I'll check with him. But we left it there so that we could track it and make sure that we budgeted for the right position. So that has, that's a move that has to be made. It's too high, I'm going to take a salary and move it to the middle school. That's why it's, it's too high. There's an extra FTE in there that shouldn't be. Was that the same answer that you had?
Yes.
Said so well. No, not really.
Can I ask for clarification on that?
Oh, of course.
So it's, it's almost a $200,000 increase. So you're saying it's already somebody that's there that's moving over to the middle school?
Is this, this, are you on?
It's gray, I believe it is.
Yeah, the 533, 542 in yellow?
Mm-hmm.
In blue.
In blue.
Oh, in blue, I'm sorry. That's in, yeah, yellow on mine. That circled for me to see exactly why that salary is up. And again, I believe, working with Jack, there's a movement to that.
It's also that a position that was originally held by a special education teacher was then filled by, this is the second year, with an adjustment counselor. And that, so then therefore that salary went into the guidance department, you know.
So that got into the conversations about the differences that we had at early, adjustment counselor, guidance.
Right.
And guidance counselors. So that's when we actually counted your seven FTEs and we had eight salary. Where does that person go?
Right.
That's the kind of detail that we're looking at, and we were confused between adjustment counselor and guidance counselor. So that is an area that we've got highlighted here, that we've got to find out why that went up so high. So we're looking at it as well. When we first started it, it was a difference between what we were calling in the business office on a shell, if you will, as a guidance counselor, but it was an adjustment counselor. So there's some movement in there within the current budget that's going to net out. I'm just wanting further conversation with principals as to who's where. So that has to be done within this shell, this budget.
Yeah, there needs to be.
No, absolutely, it needs to be looked at. We've had the conversation internally, yes.
Yep. And Peter, could you do us just a huge favor too? And I know you're going to suss it out, and can we just communicate with the towns once we do?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions for Galen at this point?
So the AP exam line item is fifty percent, correct?
Right.
Okay. I don't know if this is the part, or if next week about athletics and the matrix of athletics and field prep and all that, so is that a?
I'll have Jim here.
That's a facilities discussion.
Okay. Because I, it's not adding up for me between the cost of athletics, what we collect for fees, which is about a hundred and fifty K if we do the fuzzy math, to the young lady in the top left here.
Thank you. For the first time again, Arma Nemo, bullet number six, I'm not sure if it's bullet number six. For the first time, we have put the full cost of athletics in your budget, and that's why it's up $48,000. Because the total athletic budget is really $600,000. That is for all your coaches, all your salaries for coaches, supplies and materials, transportation officials. It is not what Mr. Goodwin does out there as far as fields and maintenance and buildings and grounds. He carries that in his facility shell. However, athletic salaries, coaches' salaries are all in this budget at a hundred percent. You get $189,000 currently in athletic fees. So if you subtract the 600 in the athletic fees, that delta is now in your budget. And that's why it's gone up previously towards forecasting at the end of the fiscal year. The district has in the past said, what's athletics in deficit? And you've covered it. This way, it's on book.
Okay.
This is on book for the first time. Now, the fee conversation about what you raise in fees or lower fees, or what you want to do with fees, to offset that increase is your decision for a fee discussion.
Yep.
However, this now represents a hundred percent of your athletic program.
Okay. So the two next line items, which are zero in the budget, I, hard to believe that it has zero cost, the officials' expense and supplies.
Right, because that's in your athletic following, revolving account covered by your fees.
Okay, so, sorry, I thought you just said that this, the salaries, so salaries is just salaries? Okay.
I do think, moving forward, not this year, we as, we collectively need to start having a conversation about the fees we are, that parents are paying to play sports. It is, it's high. It's high for some families.
High spend all the S's.
And I think that we have to begin to create a plan moving forward to start to answer that, because we are slowly starting to get some kids who are asking for waivers. That obviously is something we would do, but there will be families who will simply say, don't go out, because we can't afford it. And I never want a student to feel as if we can't afford to play sports. That's not what high schools are about. So it's a conversation we're going to have to have moving forward.
And you mentioned this in the past, still looking for a consolidated supply list for all of our sports, right? We still don't have, we see it on the, all the fields of play, you know what I mean? One sport has all this equipment, the other sport does not.
So you're like an equipment list or supply list?
I'm looking for an equipment list. I'm looking for.
I did ask Jim to put fixed assets lists together, as well as those donations and a booster club support, so he should be doing that as well.
Okay, great. That'll provide some transparency there. Do non-athletics have fees? Like music programs and all those?
They do not. Just fees associated with some of the things they do, such as DECA, but they do not, it's just athletics.
So you look at DECA, for example, which can get very costly. And we have to decide, are we going to, you know, figure out how to fundraise? But there was a trip, and it wasn't DECA-related, I believe it was civics. Washington, DC. Right. And there was no way the family could, there was no way the family could pay for it. So we have to start looking at, how are we going to do some things that are fair to all of our families?
And just a call out here too, and hopefully the public sees a trend developing here, our work with Appendix C as well.
Which we've been working on.
Right, which we've been working on where.
Can you explain Appendix C?
So Appendix C is obviously our clubs, coaches, stipends. And hearing stories from our, some of our, our teachers who are running clubs, going to Washington DC, being paid very minimal for, for running this club, and then ultimately, obviously, as teachers tend to do, paying out of pocket during these trips.
Yeah.
Never being reimbursed, right? So I just hope that the public's seen a trend here, right? Our subs are inadequately paid, right? Where we're fighting over, we're talking about athletic fees being the highest in the, in the area. We're talking about our per pupil expenditure being the lowest in the area. Like, there's a trend here, folks, right? These are all data points that the towns have to step up and realize, and I'm not, I'm not pushing it on the towns. The towns are doing everything that they can, but at some point, it's, it's pretty disheartening, right? Sitting on the committee year after year after year and having these conversations about what we want to do, what we want to do in order to push the district forward. And these are the conversations we're having. So quick vent session for me, I apologize. Any other questions for Ms. Desert? John?
I have one. We spoke earlier about some new course offerings being picked up by existing staff. I was just curious, is there any, is there any budget impact to that? Are these staff members, are they incentivized at all or compensated at all for these?
For new courses?
New courses?
No.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So there's curriculum writing, which can happen during.
During our common planning time.
During common planning time, so that, that's a cost savings. Unless Terry has already budgeted it, there needs to be time. Is it the perfect way to run things? No, there would never be incentives to start a new course. There is some small incentives to start new clubs, which is what we're talking about in Appendix C, but then you would have to have some quantifying markers, such as, you've got to show how many meetings, you've got to show.
How many kids?
How many kids, the effectiveness, more so on the club. A classroom is, you teach five classes, and so that would be one of your five classes. So you wouldn't incentivize that.
Within your licensure and.
What I'd like to say though, is when you mentioned Washington DC, those advisors and everyone attended got zero. They're not even a club. So that's the kind of staff that we have, and you made that point before, Alan, like these people just make that happen. These new courses come because they have a fire inside to say, I want to offer this. That's honestly where all of them come from.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Desert. Any other questions before we move on to subcommittee updates? So at our next meeting, we will tackle the middle school, because Jack will be in attendance, and we'll talk through IT, facilities, and those three pieces.
And special ed.
And special ed. Sorry, Ms. Blay, you had never forgotten. Subcommittee updates. Regional Finance Committee, any updates there?
No, outside of I'm blocking and getting something scheduled.
Okay, yep, no worries. Superintendent's Valuation Committee, that's, that works ongoing. Mr. Strauss is in year two of his two-year plan, providing the committee with all the evidence, so we're good there. Wellness and Health Committee, any updates there at this point?
Meeting in April, I believe.
Meeting in April? Great. Policy Subcommittee?
No.
No updates at this time. Capital Committee?
We need an update.
We need an update there.
So Capital Committee, I actually spoke with Habib and Associates today. They are meeting with me on Monday about gathering all of their information. They are putting together a community survey, not a student survey, a community survey. The question that I have for you is, do you want to see the community survey first? So I'll see it. I'll give my input on it. We have, technically, we would either go to the Capital Committee to say, how do you feel about this survey? Or we go to the School Committee and say, how do you feel survey? Since we are meeting quickly in two weeks, my suggestion is going to be that I show, I send you the survey, and you just decide whether or not it works for you.
Yeah, I think the committee should see it.
Yep, okay.
Great. Perfect. Moving on, other business that may properly come before the meeting, anything there? I don't believe it.
The only thing I want, as we look at the next, is there anything, I know we have the, not sure we accurate a vote on.
Yep.
Is there anything scheduled at that meeting?
No, I think it's all budget.
Okay. I would recommend we schedule this down, because we want to make sure that we talk about.
So Renee, maybe we can just touch base offline and just be strategic about what we can push. Yep, and we'll keep it just, yep, I'm with you. Steve, Carter.
I do have one thing.
Sure.
So a couple weeks ago, I had spoken to Alan and Terry about the CPA and the funds that they offer, and I had put in a phase one application for a geodesic dome greenhouse to go somewhere on the campus. And it didn't qualify as a greenhouse, but it can qualify as an accessory structure. So for reference, it would be a circle, it would be a geodesic dome. There's a couple different sizes, but I was thinking of one that would be about a circle, about as round as these tables. And essentially, you'd have some outdoor beds, but you could use it as like storing the tools, the dirt, starting seeds, things like that. And I was thinking of putting it right over there, just because it's out of the way, the telephone poles go around it, there's no trees. The only real disruption would bring mowing. So I, I'm going to proceed with the phase two, but it might not qualify, it might not go through, but I have to get that done before the end of March, and I just wanted to kind of bring that up and briefly touch on it at our next meeting if possible, if that's something you're interested in even doing.
That's definitely been a passion of yours.
It's a great idea. The only thing, I would like you to meet with Greg Goodwin.
Who's Greg? Hi, Greg. Sorry, hi.
Just to be able to talk about location.
Absolutely.
As the operations person.
Yep.
It's just as important, it's great we put the structure there. What's the annual upkeep? What's the maintenance of this? So what's the?
So you can request X amount. The domes are actually not that expensive. I don't fully know the price of the construction, any of that, because that's not in the phase one plan. But the dome itself costs around 15,000, maybe less. So I requested 35,000 with the intention of purchasing enough tools and dirt and seeds that we should have at least five years of grace. And apart from something devastating happening, the structural integrity of the dome has enough that it can withstand winds, snow, rain, all of that.
You don't have to paint it? That's a wonderful thing.
No, no painting.
But who's maintaining the beds? Who's doing what with the product?
It would be the students.
Okay, but that's, that's something that has to go into the, so I think it's a fantastic idea, but I think there's other planning that has to go along with that to, to support that, right?
Right, of course.
It's like the, five years ago, we came with the unified program, and it was great, but we, what's the plan to upkeep it? Who's, which teacher's going to be responsible? Yeah, so.
It's definitely a bigger conversation, because I know in our sub-separate programs, we've had a greenhouse that we've ordered like three years ago, and it's about location of where we want to put it. So you definitely want to touch base with Greg and talk about that. And I can see our program students keeping up with that too, and maybe even running something out of it if we can find a location. So that all.
Great curricular ideas.
Yes. Great curricular, involve teachers. And my only comment is, obviously watering, or I assume is crucial, but when the school year ends, you have the July and August months, and there's a maintenance issue, and I speak from experience, not at my house.
So you do have E S Y kids, no pressure.